Matters pertaining to your family happen. So I want to give you the opportunity to pray for not only us this morning, but also for yourself as well. Sh'azah, Ashpiga.
A question. A question now. For those that don't speak Navajo or hear Navajo, I like talking Navajo, my own language, as far as I can go with it. Roshi, shotih zindolish. Are yah begeten nichitka? Ma stran nichimah. Dat ho pere ch'el inla. Ar o elis ti bih inla. Ar o shantin bebe geten nskat. Ar o aretnesha begete chanis t'ad. Nsket peh an inla. Be awei sh'atschun be din niid. Deyin bine e nichidin niid. Bo do ha go xingo ha lo be not e dekho peh hasaani nichidin niid. Keh waliyah eh ch'ela, our constitution. E kodo e be nhanichin ntae h'oziongo. At ay na'shlo, adon si da inzine. Ina nichin nksin, kodo na'shikha. But ay ayah kodo e kon. Na'de k'aspiin da. Ha la'ne ashne na'di niid. Nichid na'di na shehe kon. An shehna o ch'ho inda. Pa shehni niid o h'yi na be geten na ni'kal. At kon da sh'atschun dat ho ndal ndalve. Ar o ch'ildan esse be t'p'ak'abakon da hazni. Ar o ndan ndan de spik'na ra da d'tle. Na ha ot'ego. Ar o t'is ay 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 da da. Ar o t'les paine pais paiso. Da hak sheh. O lo shehda. Nsket ya at'ego be geti ti. Nah ha an an inla. Ashon ndati yalego sheh da de ch'eh oto. Ashi ego sheh be lihi ti da. Na'shi niched i ah. Ar o shantin ay o de h'osak'ad obbe geten nskin is sheh. At ay kodo. Na sheh na ni'zi toli. To e jolt ch'ne na de kon begi itas to yisunil ta. Pe ki hi k'as ar o yilchun. Ar o ndakho peh na he geti ti is sheh yinlini. Kud ay kodo ayah. So ba na'de shni dolishidin ne. Pa a'tchho. Ho ol'ago. At ed yinlini. A'tchho pa inzin. Kon na stam bakha. Michi ge laro hanichit el yado h'ozion na na'ro nichidin niid. We're keeping everything positive, staying away from the negatives. It ay eh hanichidin la. Kud ay sheh ayah kon na'tsos nichitasen el. Ar o kon hanchit ay kodo be na'shna ilkeh dolish to a'tchho de e ne. Nah ha izne li'dod ne. Ch'ho pa inzin e kodo pa itin de pa ti'kos. To ashon ro do sheh yidin ne. Kud ashin kodo na'tsos ini. Be ha na'de el yado leh lichun hin'ch'ekh'sti yin'ka on ta'kli. Yinlini nichitso ego deyin na aney el yado leh. Kud ay kodo na'shiskh'ad leh yinlini ashon ro is sheh. Ar o nda a'tisigo paine o a'tchho de. On t'ha odo o da ne da t'zadot au hada iti e be ha na'arli yinlini. Ashon ro sheh din niidoli. Ar o kon yit'ana t'ha ndat deyin yinlini cheh. O kodo eh sheh. Na a'de xin na nahaskh. A'de xin sheh awei sh'atschun nah ha be din niid yinlini. Kud ay do eh ha xin eh kanaga pa ch'oin be yinlini. Eh kon e be sheh din dolish kon. Ashi ni k'ahol. So de ch'itoli t'ha ndat z'ad de de e ne be nahalni. Ha ar o na'do ne da yinlini. O kodo ayah. There will be done. O di ne xink'eha eh ho k'as. Xink'eha eh kud yin. Xink'eha eh kon. Ch'ho pa inni t'no kodo na'shi t'ada t'na'ri kos kon. Na'tsos ini t'ada na digi di'ina aney na'ri yado leh. Nichitso na'di yin dolish yinlini. In Jesus' name, amen.
Iya, Sh'azah, thank you for that prayer. Auto, my condolences to you, Sh'azah, for for your family member. So with that, committee members, we're going to go ahead and move down to item number two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. I would like to ask Lorraine, or actually, has Honorable Otto So or Honorable Edmund Ya'zi join the call?
Not yet, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll move forward. Are there any other delegates who are on the line? Who would like to introduce them?
Delegate Daniel So is on the call.
Good morning, Sh'azah, Chair. So, would you like to introduce yourself to those who are on the call at this time?
Yeah, la. Yad'shah way. Yeah, Daniel So, mech'ahzi. Benjekinon kon manixt is k'ach'itni bash'schun. Es kristli da se ch'eh to mahbani da se nala. Or nle. Ha a bech'edho. A'ajit hat na'z n'ul'br. Adahhui so'i gi ay a'ja. Uh, baseballs an'insle. Or leganu kech'oh ayah counselor. Uh, hin'otorion star lake. Dublu pantado, White Horse Lake, Casamere Lake, Lil Water. Ar do Baka Prue. At oh ayah. Na't aninsle. Iya, la. Yad'shak'ig sh'wintik. So in antolish we got legislation 018 that we're really pushing for. Honorable Carl Slater will is the sponsor of that legislation. Iya.
Iya, Sh'azah, thank you for introducing yourself. Are there any other delegates on the line?
Delegate Slater.
Yeah, they have been. Go ahead, Slater.
Yeah, good morning. Uh, sheh eh Carl Russell Slater da'sh'jin. Then ik'ana da ashah. Uh, ki'ani nishlan s'ontene bash'schun t'na'jin da'sh'ch'era s'ontene da'sh'na. My name's Carl Slater. I'm ki'ani born for the Jewish people. I'm the vice chair of the House Committee. And I'll be ready to present 16821 after the reports this morning. And currently, my way into Windrush should be there in about 15 minutes. Thank you very much. Sh'ma.
Thank you, and welcome to the Law and Order Committee Delegate Slater. I believe I also heard Delegate Begay. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, they have been a sh'teja. Members of Law and Order Committee. Feel like I'm at the Hesse meeting now. With sh'teja and sh'nala there. Like, good morning. Um, th'eshkijin d'ne nshni ro beht'wanibash'schun. Ar o th'ol'chin da'sh'ch'ei. Ki'ani sh'nala da'te. Ar do ay a'deh ayah. I'm going to use the word, uh, sh'teja used, uh, about his location. Nle. And leh, when somebody says nle, that means way far away. So nle, uh, ha a'deh ay a'deh. M'la banat a'nsle. Uh, sh'teja ishka ki'etan ap'onsabat'in. Ha be t'wo do t'ho neheli. Oh, sheh, I think, uh, just wanted to listen in also. Uh, and have a good day. Iya.
Iya, Shna, Honorable Begay. So with that, we'll go ahead and are there any other delegates on the line? Not hearing anything, I'm going to go ahead and start. Do we have anybody from the President's Office on the line? Hello? Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry. Hi, good morning. This is Chairman Johnson with the Office of the President, Vice President. I am in attendance.
Good morning, Ms. Johnson, and welcome. Are you the only one from the President's Office that is on the line?
Um, yes, currently I am.
Thank you for that. Do we have anybody from the judicial branch on the line? Not hearing anything, I'm going to go ahead and proceed forward. Do we have anybody from the Department of Justice on the line? Not hearing anything, I'm going to go ahead and ask, are there anybody from Speaker's Office on the line?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Law and Order Committee staff, guests. This is Nikita Kirk, Legislative Staff Assistant from the Office of the Speaker. I am joining the call today.
Thank you, Ms. Kirk. Do we have anybody from Office of Legislative Service on the line? We know that we have Lorraine and we have Sherelle on the line. Do we have anybody from Office of Legislative Counsel on the line? I did get a text message from Dana this morning informing me that she will be on and off the line. Our current counsel Troy is actually on leave today, but she will be covering Law and Order Committee as well as doing her other responsibilities. So she will be joining us later in the call. Are, is there anybody else that I did not ask who are currently on the line?
This is Shirley Nam on my.
This is Scott Hockersmith, CEO of Southern Solutions Environmental. I'm on the line as well.
Yeah, they have been it. This is Dr. Patricia Nez Henderson also on the line.
Good morning, Chair, committee members. This is Michelle Morris from Navajo Department of Health. I'm on the line today. Thank you.
All right, great. Well, thank you so much, everybody, for making their presence known. So with that, we're going to go ahead and proceed forward to item number three, review and adopt the agenda. Can we have the agenda read into the record, please?
Good morning, LLC members. Agenda of the Law and Order Committee. Twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council Special Meeting through Telecommunication, August 30th, 2021, 10:00 AM. Presiding Honorable Eugene Charles Newton, Chairwoman, Honorable Otto So, Vice Chairperson. One, call special meeting to order, will call. And implication number two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Number three, review and adopt agenda. Number four, review and adopt the journals, there's none. Five, receive reports. A report from Scott Ike Hockersmith, CEO and President. Gabriel Freeland, Director of Tribal Operations Southern Solutions, SSE Decon Service. Navajo Nation, Camination. Uh, can't even say, sorry. Camination 2020. B report from Layer Chief, Fire Chief, Navajo Nation Fire and Rescue Services on San Juan County. Fire Department Agreement. Six old businesses, nine new businesses. Legislation number 0168-21. B legislation number 0170-21. A cause of special meeting announcement and adjournment. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. So with that, committee members, can I get a motion and a second for the agenda?
Delegate James motion.
Can I get a second? Going twice? I need a second to accept the agenda?
Such it, ah, she's on phone.
Iya, Sh'azah, thank you. So we do have a motion made by Honorable Vince James, second by Honorable Eugene So. Committee members, are there any questions or comments? Any things that have to be made to the agenda at this time? Committee members, there has been a request to amend the agenda and to adhere the legislation. We go into the report, committee members. So if a committee member could make that motion and a second at this time to amend the agenda to allow for new business to be heard before receiving reports. Okay, I'll go ahead and ask for a second request. Okay, not hearing any motions or any requests. We're going to go ahead and proceed forward then to adopt the agenda as is. We do have a motion and a second. So with that, Sherelle, can you assist us with the vote call vote, please?
Okay, Honorable Vince James, how do you vote?
Delegate James votes green.
Honorable James votes green. Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote?
Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote?
Honorable.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Otto So, how do you vote? Honorable Edmund Ya'zi, how do you vote? Honorable Otto So, how do you vote? Honorable Edmund Ya'zi, how do you vote? Honorable Madam Chair, Charles Newton, you have two in favor, zero opposed. Three not voting, which is including the Chair. Madam Chair, Charles Newton not voting. Honorable Otto So not voting. And Honorable Edmund Ya'zi not voting, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Sherelle. So with that, the agenda does hereby pass. And we'll go ahead and proceed forward to the next item on the agenda, which is to review and adopt the journals. There is none. We are on our first report. We have Scott Ike Hockerson, CEO and President, and also Gabriel Freeland, Director of Tribal Operations with Southern Solutions Environment, SSE Decon Service. That is currently on the line. Is that correct, Mr. Hockerson and Mr. Freeland?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Great. And committee members, they will be providing a report to us on the Navajo Nation Decontamination for 2020. Can I get a motion and a second to hear the report?
Oh, go ahead.
Motion Delegate James.
Motion made by Delegate Vince James, second by Delegate Eugene So. So with that, Mr. Hockerson and Mr. Freeland, the way that this, the way that the Law and Order Committee does conduct our business is in regard to reports, you have 15 minutes to provide a report to the committee. If you need an additional five minutes, you can ask for those additional five minutes. If there are no objections, those five minutes will be granted to you. And then upon completion of your presentation, if you could let the committee know that you are done. At that point, committee members will have the opportunity to ask questions based on the information that you provided to the committee. During that time, I will ask that you not speak until you are recognized. And again, you know, we do try to encourage during this time as well that everyone who is on the line, that their phone is muted. We do have a zero tolerance rule here at Law and Order Committee. This is your warning. If your phone is not muted, we will hang up the line on you. And if the second time you do interrupt this committee meeting with any disturbance by not muting your phone, you will not be allowed to get back onto the committee hearing. So this is in regards to everyone who is listening on the line. Again, we have a zero tolerance rule for not muting your phone. You will be dropped from the call the first time. The second time, we will not allow you to come back into the committee meeting. So please, everyone look at your phone and make sure that your mute button is highlighted. So with that, Mr. Hockerson and Mr. Freeland, do you have any questions on the procedure of the committee reports before we turn the floor over to you for your presentation?
No, ma'am, I don't believe we do.
So with that, Mr. Hockerson, Mr. Freeland, you both have 15 minutes combined time to present your information to the Law and Order Committee members. The floor is yours.
Morning, Madam Chair and members of the Law and Order Committee. My name is Scott Hockersmith, owner and CEO of Southern Solutions Environmental, also known as SSE Global. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today so that we may highlight our achievements and accomplishments. I would like to lead into introducing Gabriel Freeland, our Director of Tribal Operations, to speak to the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. With that, we're going to roll into our videos and do our best to stay within the 15 minutes and understand that, you know, we are limited to the 15 minutes. With that, Madam Chair, we did share the information with the committee ahead of time, but we will show the video to the viewers.
More than 500,000 Americans have died from COVID-19. While most people infected with the virus experienced mild symptoms, some populations are at greater risk for serious illness, permanent health issues, or death. Professional biosecurity and decontamination can reduce the risk to your organization and help facilities reopen safely. The COVID-19 pandemic has changed everyone's lives, but it has especially impacted the Navajo. SSE Global implements viral mitigation and rapid responses to environmental hazards. During 2020, SSE traveled throughout the Navajo Nation, working directly with emergency responders. Our mission. SSE Global is an American company based in New Mexico that invests in its people and ongoing development. We strive to protect, improve, and save the lives of the people we work with and serve. What is SSE Global's expertise? Biosecurity refers to all aspects of biological safety, including decontamination, janitorial services, and biological waste disposal. Sanitization includes janitorial and maintenance cleaning, utilizing CDC-recommended and EPA-approved cleaners. Full staff can be on-site 24/7. Decontamination includes federal-approved fogging with military-grade decontaminants that neutralize close to 100% of all biological pathogens. How can SSE help your community?
Decon 7 provides innovative disinfectants to get us past this pandemic.
The COVID-19 pandemic has touched everybody on the planet from a health and wellbeing perspective. I believe the effects of the pandemic are enduring and will be here for a long time. I don't think that anybody will touch or look at a door handle, an elevator button, an escalator handrail, or any touch point in a public space the same for a very long time to come.
We were actually doing a lot of work in China on the front lines of African swine fever. We were one of the few products recognized by the Chinese government in actually killing and stopping the virus on those farms to where they could successfully be repopulated. When COVID broke out, our product was quickly diverted for use for stopping COVID infection, the spread of COVID, and it was successfully used, and that was documented.
Navajo Nation are reminding everyone to remain diligent as they work to slow the spread of COVID-19. Along with weakened lockdowns, they've also had a rigorous cleaning schedule. Our Jamie Warren speaking with that crew on the ground. So what's next for them? Good morning, Jamie.
The company is called Southern Solutions Environmental. Their vice president is Colin Anderson. He says they've been spraying areas all over the Navajo Nation from Chinley to Window Rock with a chemical called D7, which they say can kill the virus on surfaces and in the air. They were working free of charge, but with the CARES Act, they say some money has been allocated to keep them around for much longer. Anderson says they could be on the Navajo Nation until at least 2022, continuing this effort.
What we had planned to do and what we are actively doing is hiring with a Navajo First preference to make sure that the money that's coming in for the CARES Act is actually going back to the community instead of to some contractor that's just going to take it back to Texas or wherever.
He says they're working to expand that by another 20 or so employees, and the hope is to have them stationed at all parts throughout the Navajo Nation.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. With that, we're going to go into our PowerPoint, and I do have some of our staff that are going to help us get through this. At this point, we're providing the Navajo Nation update as far as the 2020 operations and decontamination services. Again, we did our introductions. I'd like to kind of highlight Southern SSE. It is a biosecurity company based out of Farmington, New Mexico, that manages preventive decontamination and hazardous response. Preventive decontamination really focuses on routine decontamination of facilities and venues that might be used by the general public. Hazardous response is usually utilized for any type of mitigation that comes through exposure. SSE uses a product called Decon 7. And with that, Madam Chair, we're going to go ahead and go to the next slide. Again, with the Navajo Nation declaring a public health emergency, that was the initiative that allowed for SSE to come in and try to see how we could help mitigate and get the nation through the pandemic. And again, the CARES Act was an opportunity for the nation to outsource and provide backup to some of the initiatives that are going on within the Navajo Nation. Next slide. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Lynn.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Sherelle Lind Benali. T'od'eg'os'ndish'le, t'ach'ini bash'schun, t'ot'ot'ni bash'ch'ei han'at'ni bash'na'le. I'll be going over the action-filled analysis. Here is our SSE 2020 contract. Here is our contract.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if you could see me, but we can't see the PowerPoint on. All I still see is the YouTube video that's black. And then I see a drive behind it, but I don't see the actual PowerPoint. I just want to let you guys know. I apologize for interrupt.
Okay. No, Madam Chair, we apologize for not getting this situated.
Okay. So this is our SSE 2020 contract. Our contract number, the date executed October 22nd, 2020, date expired December 31st, and the amount of $4,240,000 in Navajo taxes. So SSE and Navajo Nation facility maintenance. So SSE and Navajo Nation Facility Maintenance Department, we developed the strategy to help the nation set their goals and objectives to keep their employees safe through the pandemic. We provided decontamination, emergency response when a building was compromised. We surveyed over 400 offices on the Navajo Nation, and this is just to secure the Navajo Nation from, from COVID-19. We're provided that cleaning and sanitation services. Our decontamination coverage was 6.2 million square feet of space, equivalent to 143 acres. It was roughly around 40 million cubic feet of decontamination. Again, we did survey 400 Navajo Nation facilities. Work orders were made up, emergency work orders over 600,000 square feet. And we also did decontaminate the chapter houses and senior centers, being that those were our food distribution and emergency essential needs. The primary challenges that we had with working with the Navajo Nation, of course, we live in a rural area. Again, we did survey 400 locations. Some of them didn't have any street names or no addresses. The long distance between the sites, the prioritization, I'm sorry, outdated and incomplete data and incomplete mobile network, but we were able to manage to overcome those obstacles. For Navajo Nation Facility Department, again, we did spray the chapter houses and senior centers. The 110 chapters, majority were decontaminated, and the treatment was four, four times a week per facility. We did have, we did spray 84 chapter houses and senior centers with 83. Although 27 were not sprayed, these facilities were unaware of our services, that we're contracted under the Navajo Nations, or some of them did have their in-house cleaning. And I have a graph here showing all five agencies on how many chapter houses were sprayed, senior centers, and what wasn't sprayed. Now I'll go ahead and give the floor to Terry Lynn. She'll be going over the SSE method.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Terry Lynn. Southern Solutions Environmental utilizes a powerful decontaminant called DECON 7 that effectively disinfects, sanitizes, cleans, and deodorizes in a wide temperature range. DECON 7 is EPA registered, which makes it a practical sanitizing agent for public and food production environments. It is odorless when used within the recommended timeframe. DECON 7 is made up of hydrogen peroxide, laundry detergent, and inorganic salts. This allows the breakdown of surrounding mucus and saliva to nullify not only COVID-19 viruses and its variants, but also other illnesses like influenza and hantavirus. We have the procedural steps that a field technicians will follow when fogging DECON 7 in public and office spaces, starting off with an arrival, continuing on to a setup, following through with the decontamination, and ending with a departure. SSE has a total of 10 teams for the Navajo Nation, including chapters Tohajula, Alamo, and Reima. Eight teams are dedicated to routine decontamination, and two teams readily available for emergency decontamination. Here is an overview of how the chapters are divided. I will now turn the presentation back to Lynn.
This is the SSE decontamination mapping. It's a searchable map and online database that we provided for the Navajo Nation. It gives a live update of the decontamination process. It has Google Plus codes and it has a GPS location, data on frequency of each facility sprayed, information on what technician sprayed, when they began, and when they ended. Our critical responses and solution is our cloud data management. We did have our emergency work orders in 213s, and that's all provided for the Navajo Nation. We also had the COVID-19 portal reporting exposure to NDOH website. So we developed that emergency work order for all 213s, and our arrival time was around 4 to 24 hours. And with that, we had them working within a 50-mile radius to ensure the same-day service. Now I'll go ahead and give the floor to LaRose. She'll be going over the SSE initiatives.
Good morning. My name is LaRose Spencer. I am from Lower Griswold, Arizona. So we're going to be going over SSE initiatives. SSE has taken upon themselves to build a better workforce, therefore encouraging our employees to build their resumes, continue their education, and empower themselves to be a better person for their community and for the nation. SSE is doing this by having multiple programs and opportunities, like our Employee Advancement Program, our Skills Assessment Aptitude Testing, APSA International Credentialing. So within these programs, our employees are able to challenge themselves to go further with their career, see where improvements can be made, and learn how to be, just do better. Next, we'll be continuing with our initiatives. We have in federal programs, so optimizing them to help us do a job that is provided to accomplish the goals and objectives with our clients. Next, hiring. Now, first, if we want, if we're going to be working with Navajo Nation, we do want to hire locally. Also, materials and training. Providing the proper trainings, need to complete the job safely and efficiently, supplying our employees with the PPE needed. And here, employee surveys. During our time, we had a contract. We went ahead and sent out surveys to our employees to see just where they're at. Here on the left-hand side, you'll see that we kept a pretty good 50/50 ratio of female and male employees. And in the center, you'll see a level of education. Majority of our employees did have a high school diploma. We also had those who had certificates, vocational backgrounds, associates. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see that a huge portion of our employees were interested in continuing their education. That is something that we were, are helping right now. We'll be going into our biosecurity services.
So our SSE commitments is preventative decontamination, hazard response coordination with the Navajo Nation. We want to keep that scheduled routine decontamination for the nation. We also want to maintain that response time of 24 hours or less, and we want to be flexible to any of the Navajo Nation's needs. Again, with this Delta variant out, we want to keep everyone safe, seniors, senior centers, chapter houses, and schools. Go ahead and the floor to Gabe.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, again, thank you very much for your time. Moving forward, again, if we're fortunate enough and the nation is looking at continued decontamination services, we will continue all the benchmarks that have been met and also looking at expanding on those benchmarks. Again, we are here to help the Navajo Nation and the communities within the Navajo Nation. And we look forward to moving in that fashion. Madam Chair, we're going to conclude with a video and then we will be prepared to turn the floor over back to you, Madam Chair. And it's a two-minute video.
My name is Nabali Vatsuri. I am from Window Rock, Arizona.
Hi, my name is Tanisha Ali Badoni. I'm from Nera Canyon, but I live in Cananta, Arizona.
Hello, my name is Kevin Greys and I'm from Tetchy, Arizona.
My name is Brian Kly. I'm from Cananta, Arizona.
My name is Scott Hawkersmith. I'm the owner and CEO.
Working with SSE for about six months and I was the technician for the Window Rock, Seemichals, and Fort Defiance area.
I work at SSE. My, my position was the field technician.
And I worked for a company called Southern Solution Environmental. Title with them is Field Lead Technician.
My job title for SSE is a field technician. And I'd like to take this time to thank all of the hard-working employees that have stepped up and assisted us during this time.
Communication was great, like, you know, when I worked with them. And also knowing a lot of other people in my community and around this area, I got along with getting all of it, you know, basically the DECON services done.
It felt like I was the one. It was like my turn to, to take care of my family.
A lot of motivation for me comes from my kids. I want to show them that I'm a person that doesn't give up.
It feels good to me knowing that what this company is doing is not just for themselves, it's for the people, it's for everybody, you know? It's just basically, the point is, it's to make this world a better place.
I want to thank you and I want to thank your continued efforts as we carry into the next phase of this pandemic. Unfortunately, due to the Delta variant and other new variants of concern, it appears as though we need to continue our disinfection campaigns. We need to ensure that tribal facilities will continue to be disinfected and so that you and your community will remain safer.
I will conclude our report, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank everybody from the Law and Order Committee. I'd also like to thank my employees and everything we've been able to achieve. With that, I'll hand it back over.
Thank you for the presentation and also for the PowerPoint. I always say I'm, I'm one delegate that's very visual and auditory. So I love the PowerPoint explanations as well as the videos, and it was really, it was a good video. So thank you very much. So with that, committee members, are there, well, I do have some questions, but I'm going to go ahead and ask my committee members and also other delegates on the line who'd like to ask some questions regarding the presentation that you've given to us here today. Committee members, delegates? Delegate Eugene So, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Believe that was. Is that, what do you call it? Medicine or something that had to kill you? Like I lost my, my train of thought here. I, I, I was certified insect and pesticide and herbicide advocate in my younger days. And I was wondering how, how, how it affects our meaning. We realized that what was used within the sheet that we found out, it, it takes effect so slowly. If you handle it a lot or it gets on you. It takes effect real slowly, and some takes effect real fast. My education to be cleaning all the flies or grasshoppers, et cetera, or plants, any kind of plants and raised plants. Be really explained to the Navajo people, you know, almost like in Navajo. The one that used to talk Navajo back in the 40s. Usually the older people, when I was about maybe four, five, six years old, I would listen to these old people that were in my age, and 80 and 90 and hundreds. And the whole gun talking thing, one day this is going to happen. And if we don't go deep into the ground so far and start taking things out, that thing that we take out don't stop growing. It will populate faster than we can. So just by listening to those older people and the elderly, that the day, I guess, has come. So I, I remember saying, I'm saying, you can't smell it, you can't see it, can't hear. And they can reproduce so fast. I guess they were talking about atomic bombs when it was dropped. It disintegrated whatever was in its way. As fast as it's populated, it's alive. It goes into people's bodies, their veins, et cetera. So I guess that's what they were talking about, whatever you take out of the ground. That's that we are, my prayer. We came out the same way. We were populated. And that's how the old people saw science, I reckon. That's what you might call. So these are the things that's happening now. As it goes, it's like we are changing. We get intermarriage. We've got different blood. We're changing, and some going real, real radical. Some are very suicidal or killers. Same way as a human beings, it's the same way as a virus out there. It's changing its name every now and, every, every, almost every month or two months. So that, that's how I understand now. So the only thing I wanted to know was how, how that is harmful, whatever it's going to be, clean, clean with, cleansed with. And also, I wanted to know how long can this virus, COVID-19, last, is alive on the surface, any kind of a surface? And also hantavirus, et cetera, all you can, it's the one that's out there. That's my question. And thank you for, I guess you guys viewed a video. I did not. I don't have a phone that can do that kind of work. So maybe if I get a little bit closer, I can, to Window Rock, I can see those kinds of stuff. Like my, my, Nari always say the world turns in Window Rock.
Oh, yeah, Shizaa, thank you for those comments and for those questions. I will ask the presenters at this time. I know that you had several of our young Navajo women who did present to us during this time. So I'm hoping that they were able to translate what Shizaa, my father, Delegate Eugene So, was saying in regards to the comments at the beginning of his, of, I guess, his time when he was speaking. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Hawkinson.
Yes, so we actually have a lot of data on how long COVID lasts on surfaces. And some things can be like cotton. It can last less than 16 hours. But some things like glass, steel, vinyl, paper, polymer, baked notes, that, that can last up to at least 28 days in laboratory experiments at 20 degrees Celsius. So if, as long as it's a cool temperature, like what we're coming up on into the fall months and winter months, yes, fomite transmission is a concern, and the CDC does recommend to clean routinely and mitigate, to use mitigation strategies. As far as DECON 7, it is EPA-approved. SSE follows all OSHA and NOSHA guidelines. We go above and beyond to make sure that our technicians are safe and that the, what we're applying is safe as well. We go above and beyond to make sure that our technicians are safe and that the, what we're applying is safe as well. Again, it's hydrogen peroxide based. If you've ever used any hydrogen peroxide before, you've used something very similar to D7. So I hope that might answer some of your questions. It is color fast, it is safe on skin. And that made it the primary weapon against COVID for us. So it also works for food products as well. So I can't go because in certain NDAs, but you have eaten food before that had D7 on it, if that makes you feel better about it. Not from us, though. But for chicken disinfection, for disinfection of farms, D7 has been used in mass scales as well. Madam Chair, yes.
Oh, I mute myself. Thank you very much for answering his concerns. Delegate Eugene So, Shizaa, does that answer your questions or concerns? Okay, so Delegate Eugene So is interested in getting information on whether the D7 does affect our people. Obviously, we know that the virus does affect our people, but in terms of staying safe, what are we looking at with the chemicals that are being used?
Madam Chair, may I speak on that? Yes, so actually, I'm good to do a follow-up with anyone in this call that has more questions about the safety of the product and to have a follow-up conversation at any point with any of you about that. Again, it is being sprayed on people in other countries. This country doesn't allow that based on a lot of the things that Delegate So was mentioning that have happened in the past. But yes, no, not that I'm aware of. Hydrogen peroxide and what we use is actually, I guess the best way I can describe it is a chemical reaction as opposed to a corrosiveness. So when you buy a product from Walmart, that might be Lysol, it's corrosiveness, and that corrosion erodes that virus. Whereas with ours, we have a chemical reaction that can break through mucus similar to a detergent. But that is not harmful to people. So we do have a safety data sheet that we can share with you guys, and you guys can look through that and see where we have these approvals. Again, it comes from, the product comes originally from Sandia Labs, which is a division of Lockheed Martin. So it's really coming from some very smart people. We can actually ask some of the medical teams from them as well if you want to talk later at a follow-up. But if you have any more questions, I'm here to answer those for you. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Committee members, delegates who are currently on the line, are there any questions regarding the report that has been provided to us today on the decontamination process for the Navajo Nation?
Delegate Daniel So?
Chair So?
Did any of your employees work for the Division of General Services before they joined your company? Then I'll have follow-up based on the answer. Thank you. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Chair So. Since that's a specific question that will probably result in follow-up questions, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over to Mr. Hockerson to answer that question.
No, we did not hire anyone from Navajo Nation Facilities Maintenance Department for us after or before, or anyone from General Services.
Chair So, did you have a follow-up question?
Yes. As I recall, this entity, they're either based, are you based in Tennessee, Mississippi, or Arkansas? And I remember the former director of General Services giving a report, and this group addressed the Hess Committee. As I recall, they had a CARES Act contract that was worth over $4 million. And I'm just, the question then is, are you seeking another contract? Because at the time, I had said that there was more Navajo contractors that had become certified. That was based on the listing that was furnished by the Business Regulatory Commission. Madam Chair, back to you.
Mr. Hockerson, you could address the concerns and the questions brought up by Chair So.
Yes, so my company did originate with my father in Tennessee, but he unfortunately passed away now three years ago. I took over the company and I actually relocated the company to Farmington, New Mexico. When I initially came out, I came out as a volunteer. As CARES Act money came through, I was able to get a contract based off of good faith, working with everybody in the nation. Any kind of procurement process, I will follow. Of course, as a company, we always want a contract, we always want to work. But I will work through the Navajo Nation systems for that contract if it were possible. So thank you if that answers your questions. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for answering the questions. Chair So, did you have any follow-up questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Chair So. And on the PowerPoint, they did say that they got $4 million from the CARES Act. And I believe 500, 400, is it 457,000 that went back into Navajo Nation taxes? So that information was shared on the PowerPoint. Lorraine, can we make sure that the delegates who are on the line receive a copy of that PowerPoint? I know that Honorable Vince James did ask for it. What I did was I went into my calendar, and on the Zoom link, I just clicked on it, and that's how I was able to, to follow along with the presentation that was provided to us here this morning. Okay, Lorraine, I got your text message. The PowerPoint was a large file, so Sherelle did put it on a USB and placed it in her box at the delegates' office. So I guess if we can get Delegate, Chair So, Delegate Slater, and Delegate Begay, all Begay, those, that USB as well with that information so that they can have that with them. So with that, I see that Dana Barbara has joined the line. Dana, just FYI, make sure that your phone is muted. So committee members, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Barbara? Okay, I don't think she had a question. So with that, committee members, are there any other questions or comments at this time based on the information that has been provided to us here today?
This is Delegate James.
Delegate James, the floor is yours.
Hi, Channella. Although, presenters, in regards to facilities, correctional facility of the Navajo Nation, were you guys able to do those facilities? That'll be my first question. Thank you.
Mr. Hockerson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have, I think, like five instances of doing that. Yes, we have to pull the record, but we have done correctional facilities.
That includes Shiprock, Winter Rock, and Tubassity, I believe.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that question. Channella, are there any other questions or comments at this time from any of the delegates who are listening in on this report? I, I do have a question based on the information that you provided. So we do have 110 chapters. You said that 84 chapters were served. I didn't write down the number of how many, how many of the elderly, the senior citizen centers were also served. But of the 84 chapters, do you guys have a listing of which chapters were served and the type of work that was completed? That was my first question. And that same question would also apply for the senior citizen centers as well. We have the Chair of Health Education Human Services who is on the line. I'm sure that information is good. Oh, actually, we have the Chair and the Vice Chair of Health Education Human Services, both who are on the line who do oversee the senior citizen center. So I think that would be good information to know how many senior citizen centers were served, and then which communities were served. That's my first question. My second question is, if we have 110 chapters and only 84 were served, why were the remaining numbers not, not served? And then also, you know, the same question would apply for the senior citizen centers as well. I'm not sure exactly how many senior citizen centers we had in full operation during 2020, and perhaps that was the reason they were not served, but if we can get a little bit more information on that. Number three is, you guys did receive CARES money. My next question is, are you looking to do consulting work for ARPA money as well? Since we do have the variant here within our communities, is the decon seven, is that sufficient for addressing the variant? And are there plans to, you know, to move forward, to offer services again to our chapters, to our senior citizen centers? Who are you guys working with in terms of trying to get consulting work? Because I actually just updated on my Facebook page, and one thing that I have been doing is going to the Division of Economic Development, checking to see if there's any information for our Navajo businesses in terms of consulting work that may be available to them. I did ask, at one point, I sent an email to the entire 24th Navajo Nation Council, asking what the process or the procedure was going to be. I guess in terms of getting that information out there for our Navajo consultants, letting them know that, you know, that they can actually request funding for ARPA money. And so obviously, I see, you know, Mr. Hockerson, that you yourself, I don't, I could be wrong, but you don't look Navajo. But I do see a lot of your Navajo employees, you know, in the background, especially our young Navajo women in the background, you know, who seem to be supporting your business, who are a part of your business, who have been employed. And we saw that video with our Navajo people. And that's really, as a, as one delegate, that's really what I'm, what I like to see and what I want to hear, is that our Navajo people are being employed during this process, you know, with these consultants that do come on. And you did share that information. But in terms of ARPA, what are we looking at? How much money are you guys, are you guys requesting? You know, what is your plan or your proposal at this point to request funding for ARPA? Who are you guys working with to continue this process with decontamination? And then how many more Navajo people will we be able to employ? And I really love the, love the fact that you have our Navajo women, you know, who are standing strong behind you at this time, you know, who are supporting your business and who are a part of this business as well. And I want to encourage that, but I'd like to get a little bit more information. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over to you to answer those questions. Thank you.
And for the first question, I'm going to actually let Lynn Benali answer that because she did a lot of the work with facilities maintenance as far as where the building locations were and the tracking and the dispatch system. So I'll let her answer that first question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I worked with Facility Maintenance Department with Jeff Kirk and Herman Begay. And I was the dispatch who sent our technicians out to spray for all the facilities, office facilities, that's including the chapter houses and senior centers. So to answer your question about the senior centers and chapter houses, we did have the chapter house at 84 out of 110. Senior centers was 83, not sprayed was 27. Again, some facilities, some chapter houses weren't sprayed because they were unaware of our services, and they didn't know that we were contracted under the Navajo Nation. So they had thought that they would have to pay us out of their own budget line. And some of them did have their own in-house cleaning methods where they, you know, sprayed Lysol, Clorox wipes. So they already had their own in-house cleaning method that, they didn't want to disrupt that. And then another reason why some weren't sprayed was they didn't, we did schedule services, but due to unforeseen circumstances, we were unable to get there, or they had to reschedule again, but they never called us back with that. And the 84 chapter houses, it wasn't just sprayed one time, it was on a weekly basis. This weekly basis, it was sprayed three to four times per week. Some senior centers were not sprayed due to they were closed during the pandemic. Again, we did spray the chapter houses because they were our food distribution and essential needs center. That way, you know, the surrounding community got their food, their water, their cleaning essential supplies.
Madam Chair, we do have information here that we can provide to the committee. And again, if we need to meet offline with some of the delegates individually, we're prepared to do that. To clarify, the CARES Act money that was allocated, the Navajo Nation Council appropriated $10 million through one of the legislation. $3 million was going to be, was given to, well, $10 million was given to General Services. Of that $3 million, the council instructed General Services to buy PPEs. Again, this was at the height of the pandemic. And then $7 million was to be utilized for decontamination and mitigation efforts. $4 million was given to SSE, and $3 million was given to Health Command. Health Command took the $3 million and contracted their services out in regards to who they wanted to help do decontamination. Our efforts were then, through General Services, under Facility Maintenance. That's where we were able to hit every tribal facility, every building, every property that Facility Maintenance wanted us to decon and coordinate. And a lot of that was routine services. As far as the question you had in regards to us not being able to hit all the chapter houses in Western Agency, with the, with the Health Command having part of that contract, I believe the vendor they selected indicated they would take care of Western. So on the initial onset of our contract, we were hitting those chapters and those buildings that were in the Western Agency. So again, learning from that, you know, there was a need to really truly coordinate our efforts and communication skills in making sure that we hit all tribal facilities regardless, especially if there was exposure and needed mitigation. So again, for, for our efforts, we, we put it into the database. Facility Maintenance has access to that database, and we do have a breakdown of every facility that was decon during the pandemic of 2020. With that, Madam Chair, I will turn back over the floor to Ike Hockersmith so that he can answer the questions in regards to ARPA and all of those issues. But again, Madam Chair, I forgot to truly introduce myself. It's Technically Toy Glingy Bashes Chee. I'm originally from Eastern Navajo Agency but married into Steamboat Area of Arizona. So I'm an Arizonian for the last 20 years. Not a Cardinal, but an Arizonian. With that, Madam Chair, I'll turn the chair over, or that's table over to.
And following up with your final question about the American Rescue Plan Act, yes, we would hope to always participate in the future in anything. I, one of the biggest problems that we have run into is the question of me. We do have 10% Navajo ownership. That happened, that happened, thank God, because we have dust now. And we had 100 Navajo employees at one point last year. Of course, with money and funding running out, it becomes harder. But we have picked up other contracts outside of the Navajo Nation. So we're a successful company. I'm very proud of it. And if there's a possibility to enter some sort of procurement process for another contract, we would definitely want to do that and hope that the Navajo Nation would continue those mitigation efforts.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for that response. And I do appreciate you sharing the information regarding the work that has been completed. So my understanding is you got 84 chapters, 83 senior centers, three correction facilities. Am I missing anything else? I also want to say that, you know, as far as the decontamination, the $7 million, in all honesty, I don't think council has received a full report on the funding that is, has been awarded to the various contractors. I'd like to see that, you know, who, you know, who did what. And most, most important, you know, how much did it cost for these services? And I appreciate, you know, the 10% Navajo ownership and the 100 Navajo employees who were employed during the process. But it would be, you know, I guess it would be nice if we could get an overall count from all of the consultants who did receive CARES money, you know, to kind of get a breakdown of that. And as far as the information, my husband is also an Eastern Agency. He's from Eastern Agency. And then I always tease his family. I stole him away, brought him here to Shiprock. And 25 years later, you know, he's still here hanging in there with me. We just celebrated our 24th wedding anniversary. So certainly, you know, appreciate people from the Eastern Agency. They grew, they, 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 he was raised very good, so thank you. So again, you know, I, I think it would also be important if we could get a, if we could get, if you could send it to us, the 84 chapters, if we could get a listing of the 84 chapters, if we could get a cost for what, you know, for each of the decontamination that was, that occurred. And then also, like, what did that include? Because as was stated, you know, you guys didn't go out there and just do it one time. You know, you guys went out there a few times and, and did this work. And then also the same thing with the senior citizen centers. If we could get a listing of which senior citizen centers had the decontamination services, what did it cost for those senior citizen centers? And then most importantly, you know, we're looking at, you know, will this DECON or detox seven, I can't remember what it's called, is it going to be sufficient for the variants that are coming about? And can we, you know, are you still in the process of making sure that these facilities are being taken care of? So if you could email us that information, I think that, again, I think Chair Sewell and Vice Chair Slater may appreciate the information regarding the senior citizen centers. I know, I appreciate the information regarding corrections, but I do want to know, what did you do for corrections? You know, what did it cost to get them, to get the service provided to them? How many visits were made during that timeframe? And then especially with the ARPA money, what are you guys going to be requesting? And who specifically are you going to be working with? The $10 million that we did go to General Services, are you guys planning to work with General Services again? Or are you guys planning to branch out a little bit more and see what other, other places that you could also look into? So with that, committee members, are there any other questions or comments at this time based on the presentation that has been provided to us here today?
Chanelle, Delegate James here.
Delegate James, the floor is yours.
I can't hear Chanelle. Ado Nana, presenters, not Niki. Thank you very much for the, the presentation and allowing us to get the information. And in regards to information that is in place by, information that was provided to you guys, to, to, to us, by you guys regarding the 27 chapters. So the, the 27 chapters that did not get the service, which chapters are they? And that would be some helpful information due to the fact of why they were not. Service would be something that we would look into. And I think myself and my colleagues would like to know that information as well.
Delegate James, we, we can't hear you. The last thing you, the last thing we heard was that you wanted to get some information and that your colleagues may appreciate that. And then right there, it would, I couldn't hear anything. Delegate James, I don't see you anymore on the video and I can't hear you.
Madam Chair, I'm on the line. Good morning.
Good morning, Vice Chair. We, right now, James does have the floor. He was asking questions, but I think we lost connection. Delegate James, are you there? Delegate James? Okay, I think he's probably gonna, oh, there he is, I see him. Delegate James, I can see you, I just can't hear you. Delegate James, I can see you, but I can't hear you. You're, you're right. I see you throwing your hands in the air like, I don't know, I don't know either. You're not on mute on this end, I will tell you that. I don't see you being on mute. You, you may want to call in and just do both the video and the call in. I, I've had to do that a couple of times, so that might be one way that you could address the issue. So with that, committee members, while we wait for Delegate James, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over to Mr. Hawkinson. There was a request made by Delegate James.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Answer that question. Again, there was another, the, the contract that we were awarded did not cover Western Agency. That was a contract that was worked separately. So that's why we didn't service that area.
Madam Chair, the contract with SSE Incorporated, entire Navajo Nation, the contract that Health Command had initiated, our understanding was, was given to, I believe, the vendor that they selected. So we weren't, we were asked not to engage in the Western area of the Navajo Nation. And with a response to Mr. James' question, we will finally follow it with an email to him. And I can follow up with a text to, again, have a sidebar with any of the leadership of the council to make sure that they see the information and get the information that they may be asking questions on.
We have functioned on other contracts in Tubus City. We have paid taxes to Western, to Tubus City taxes. We have supported, we have hired from Western Agency. But as, as Mr. Freeland was stating, as the contract was worked out and executed, that was not our region. So that, that'll conclude my answer for that question. But we will respond with an email and all the appropriate things being requested in that email.
Thank you very much for sharing that information. I, I think it's kind of interesting because I did hear that the president's campaign manager actually received a very large contract. And I'm wondering if she possibly was the one who actually got that Western Agency contract. But I know that there was been questions about the contract that was received regarding the PPE and the decontamination. So I'm guessing that, that she may have gotten that contract based on the information that has been provided to, you know, to us here at council. So, so Western Agency, you didn't, you didn't, you weren't, you weren't part of that contract. Chanelle, Vince James, are you, can you get back on? Are you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I don't know how far I got in regards to the question, but let me get to the point here. There was 27 chapters that were not served. And out of those, which chapters were not served? And why were they not given the information? If there was a reason why they were not informed? It is very helpful to get that listing and to, to help myself and my colleagues to be informative to our chapters and our constituents of which chapters went through the service. And if there is still, if your contract is still in place, is there plans to get to these 27 chapters that did not get the service? And that goes as, as well with the other correctional facilities and the senior center facilities. My next question is going to be related to the contract term. I know you guys were probably provided a contract term. And what is your contract term that's currently in place with the Navajo Nation? Or maybe even with Division of Community Development, if you're dealing with just the chapters? Or do you have a contract in place with General Service? My, my next one is going to be, what is your contract number? To help us get, review those contract as well for our beneficial information when it comes down to what, what kind of agreement was in place? My, my other last question regarding contract is, do you have any five chapters throughout the Navajo Nation? And I ask this question because I believe some of the other chapters do have a contract in place in regards to decontamination and, or maybe they have a contract with a, a different company. And so when it, when it comes down to it, my question in regards to, to those contract is very beneficial for us to, to know so we can move forward with a lot of different information that is needed among ourselves. Number three is the things that you guys are doing and the things that you have done, are the chapters, are they capable of doing that? Chapter staff, are they capable of doing that kind of service within their own facility? Or maybe even at the correctional facilities or even at our executive branch facilities, are they capable of doing things that you guys are providing? And so that would be something that would be some great information to know as well. And, and I'm going to support Chanelle, Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton in regards to obtaining a listing from you guys of what she requested, of what chapters were served, which chapters did not get served and the plan for those chapters if they did not get served. That goes for the other facilities, senior center and the correctional facilities. And it would be beneficial and helpful to know if our police units have gone through this process as well? Or have you guys made the effort to move forward to see if you guys can do this to the police units regarding decontamination of our public service officers and down the line for EMTs, ambulance, fire trucks and so forth? So if, if that's in the, in the words or if that's in the plan, that would be some beneficial information. And, and if possible, I, if you can, I kindly request that we get a written report from you in regards to the listing that we are requesting for and your future plans in a written form. And we say this, as lawmakers, we ask for listings and documents. But sometimes we forget to put a timeline on there. But for me, if you guys can get that information to us by Friday, that would be helpful for us to, to elaborate and move forward on it. I mean, it would be more beneficial to also try and obtain the information possibly before our next NABAKIAT meeting. But I, I believe we do have a NABAKIAT meeting tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. But I don't, I don't know if you guys can get that information to us by tomorrow, 11:00 a.m. To all of our, to myself and my colleagues on the council to, to relay these information back to them. I, I think a written format will be very helpful for all of us to, to have that visual understanding of which chapters have been served, which chapters have not been served, which public safety facilities have not been served. And if there's plans to, to serve our public facilities, the public safety facilities or even like I stated, the police units, the ambulance, the fire trucks and so forth down the line. So if, if I can get some response in regards to those four areas that I asked questions on regarding the chapter listing and then also your contract term. And is the chapters or these facilities, these employees, are they capable of doing what you guys are, what you guys been providing? And then lastly, is a written response to be shared with us and to provide us a, a date of when that information can be given to us. Thank you, going back on mute.
Thank you, Chanelle. Delegate Vince James, I know there was a lot of questions and concerns in that. So I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over to Mr. Hawkinson and also Mr. Freeland.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Yes, we will follow up with you on all that information in the email so you can see exactly what we have achieved, break down. And I'm actually, I've actually got a list in front of me of some of the different chapter houses that we were able to complete for Delegate James, thankfully. And but yes, we will share that. We'll endeavor to get it out by tomorrow. I can't promise, that might have to come by the end of the week. We're going to work as fast as we can to share that information with you. I am going to let Gabriel Freeland elaborate a little bit as well on our contract number. And so that way you can investigate that. That is C014418, if you want to go into the.
Yes, Madam Chair and Mr. James. The life of the contract, the contract was executed October 22nd, 2020 and expired December 30th, 31st, 2020. And again, like Mr. Hawkersmith indicated, contract number C014418 is the contract number. And that went through the 164 review process with Department of Justice's review, the controller's review and executed by the president and reviewed by the legal council to the president. In regards to the certified chapters, Mr. James, we can approach those certified chapters. Some of them have in the past contracted SSE services out after the contract expired. So you're sitting, you're sitting here in August. So between January and now, we've been kind of getting phone calls from chapters that are aware of our services that participated under the mother contract with the Navajo Nation, the master contract with the Navajo Nation that we were able to decon and wanted to at least continue some of those services. So some certified chapters have reached out to us, not all. And again, we might explore those options. As far as police units, the capability of DECON seven is there to be utilized for. As far as police units, the capability of DECON 7 is there to be utilized for emergency vehicles, whether ambulance or law enforcement. In some instances, SSE did provide some decontamination to some of the ambulance services when we were in full operation mode with isolation sites in Chinley operating. And again, like Mr. Hawker Smith indicated, we will give you a breakdown of the 27 chapters that did not get any type of services. And again, I think coordinating with, the, the master contract was done under General Services, which, you know, was the logical place because they manage all the facilities on the Navajo Nation. What we did learn, and I have had a discussion with Dr. Yelloman, is again, with the breakdown in the fact that there was a contract there, I think making sure that community development is aware of that contract and coordinating with community development and the chapters to understand that we can improve a lot of these services that need to be improved and making sure that we don't have any chapters that are not aware of a contract or do not receive decontamination services. And again, it goes to the layered mitigation efforts that the nation sees that may be needed to make sure that we protect ourselves. And again, I applaud the Navajo Nation and the leadership and Health Command for taking this initiative. I mean, it's something that was thrown on the Navajo Nation's lap and you guys got to applaud yourself, you know? In the time of smallpox where we had no government support and them hurting us and harming us, in this particular instance, the governments, the federal government and the Navajo Nation government stepped up to protect our people and help our people. And again, hiring Navajo is important because I think that was an emphasis we heard from the leadership, both from the president's office and from the Navajo Nation Council. And a lot of these people that were working for SSE were those that were shut down when the governments and restaurants and businesses were shut down. They needed employment. Some of them were struggling and, and they needed a job. And we were fortunate enough with your guys' help to provide some resources for these individuals. With that, Madam Chair, I will follow up on all the requests that the committee members have asked. We will continue to do our presentations to the various committee members. So that way you see that there is on our side, the contract that we were awarded. There was complete effort in making sure we managed and were accountable to all the things that needed to be done. Madam Chair, Mr. James, Mr. So, I appreciate your guys' feedback.
Thank you for sharing that information with us. Committee members, delegates who are currently on the line, are there any questions or concerns that need to be addressed at this time based on the information that has been provided to this committee?
Madam Chair?
Vice Chair Otto Sol, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I apologize for getting on the line late. I had some morning issues I needed to take care of here, back at home to the city. Trying to take care of things and personal things. So I just wanted to make that for the record. And I'm going to go ahead and look forward to the presenter's report. Usually you think that they, when the presenter wants to make a report to the committee, they usually have a written document. And my question is why, it sounds like there's no written document according to what Honorable James spoke to. And, you know, if you don't have a written document, why want to present to the oversight committee? Or is it a contract thing that you guys want to try to continue to keep good ties and so forth? Like, you know, you're presenting, you're presenting to the committee, to a standing committee. And to me, it's, it's it's not just professionals have the report. I'm not, I'm, I'm not too sure. I haven't seen it yet. That's why I even went through the email from yesterday. But this morning, I had a look at the email because I was sort of busy all morning. But that's all to have, but I look forward to maybe if they're going to present to NABI committee, I'll have more information. Then the other really, really gets my information is the contract given to the president's campaign manager. And it don't sound, it don't sit right with me. That's why she wanted, or a person wanted to become the campaign manager to get a contract. So to me, there's, if that was a council delegate doing that, we would be people would hold us, hold us to the, to the fire there. It is, but again, I'll, I'll look forward to the, to the written report. And when they get to NABI, I'll have some questions for, for them then. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And just to be clear, Vice Chair, we did actually have that talk. So what happened was they did send the PowerPoint presentation. However, Sherelle and Lorraine couldn't forward it because it was too big. So what they did was they put it on a USB drive and they put it in our boxes because there was a PowerPoint presentation and videos that were attached to that as well. And the only way that you could see is if you're actually on, on, what is this? I think it's Zoom is what we're on. That's the only way that you could actually see it. So what Delegate James is talking about was just the quick overview that they gave us, that they served 84 chapters. And so we're just requesting a breakdown on which chapters were served and which ones were not served, as well as the senior centers as well. They also shared information. Vice Chair, you might be interested in this. Tubac City Corrections was also provided service through this con, or through this company that presented information to us here today. So again, the presentation should be in our box. We will be getting that hopefully. If not, if we didn't get it last week, then we should hopefully be getting that today. I know I checked my box on Thursday and I didn't, I just got one USB drive, which was not from this company. So just as an FYI, Vice Chair. But with the concerns that you do have, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over to Mr. Hawkinson and Mr. Freeland. The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you for elaborating. And I'm not sure if this is one of the committees that's going to be recorded or you can watch it on YouTube. But that'd be cool. Anyway, yes, so again, with our follow-ups, we're here to answer questions if any delegate wants to ask individually. Me, I'm always here to answer questions. I'm always here to work hand in hand with anybody that I'm contracted to work for. Like I said, we have completed the contract now. Hopefully in the future, there will be more work for us. We want to highlight these achievements and, and we want you guys to be really be proud of us because we are proud of the all-around response effort from the departments all the way up the chain. So with that, Madam Chair, if there's any more questions, I'm still here. Thank you.
So with that, committee members, are there any, are committee members and delegates, are there any questions or comments at this time?
It's it.
Honorable Eugene, so the floor is yours.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Although I'm not sure. What I mean is when long ago, I don't want to say long ago all the time, but that's where we're coming from, Aldis. Now, they're going to have to test something to know. They go by Junneh, which is misinterpreted and made into a bad word. That word is the word of God. It's just a it's a it's a that has it has it is it is it is but it's a the word of God. Oh, it's a it's something that not the western, they began to test, to believe. I see I thought I see it and what did that involve? All these diseases, all different kinds of virus that we're, we're combating today. They wanted to believe. And the more we tried to get that thing forward, it changes again, like I was telling you. And we had to look for another one that seemed to kill it again. Some don't. They're still alive. They're still out there. That's what they meant when they said, don't go too deep into the ground and take things out. Example, the Iranian cold, whatever that's going to reproduce when it catches the air and sunlight, whatever the molecules out there, it starts breeding with it. Those are the dangerous things. We were told never to do that. I guess those are the days, but it's happening now. So what I'm trying to say is we came to believe. Now we question it. Every contract we question, did we do what it said on there or you're not in the breach of contract? So everything has to go. You know, it has to come out even at the end. Get some results out of it. That's what the contract is all mainly about. So now we're questioning your contract. Some of us, you know, we always fear that somebody is going to cheat us or lie to us or windle us or you name it, all that. So we're looking for that area, that or that key that's never crossed, whatever we look for. So I'm just trying to tell you to excuse us for these questions that we're asking you and, and what we're asking for you to give us so we can see it. But you're right, they didn't lie to us. They used the money wisely. They're not lying. All, all the people that got involved with these contracts, the president, the six all the process that had, once you try to get the number, there's a contract that went through to get it, you know? That, that it came in. I always say it was debated in Congress, CHER's Act. That's how it came out. That's how it should be used, not misuse. Then we're in the breach of contract, whoever you contract with, whatever Indians. So these are some of the, the, the issues, the concerns that we have now. Because we want to ask if you did put that $2 over there or the other 2 cents over here, that's that you said on the paper. You know, or else, you know, you had to pay back or don't invite you on the Navajo Nation again, et cetera. This, this is what we became. This is who we are now. So to me, I grew up when the doors were open when you sleep. You don't have to be scared. You can walk wherever you want to, take a walk. Those are the days. Now, where I live in Chinney, I had to let myself in the, in the house. Can't walk at night no more. So this is where we're at now. So they aspire, these questions comes about if we're cheating or not, or we're lying or not. Those are the main concerns we have and the issue. So don't take us too hard. But those are some answers that we have to answer back to our people because that's how our people is always asking questions. Because if you did put that gas in there and went to Winona and you still in Winona or went to the meeting, they had to ask you that question. So that's where we're at now for excuse of my, these are my comments. These are some of the things I see within the Navajo Nation and I'm very, very hurt. And somehow I wish it would turn back around, but I don't think it will for so far. And okay, there, well, we're so, to me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to ask and to try to request for all these questions and answers that you need to, we need to see in black and white. It is what at all. I don't, yeah, thank you.
So with that, committee members, are there any other questions or comments at this time? Not hearing anything and we're going to go ahead and proceed forward to accept the report that has been provided to us here today by Mr. Hawkinson and also Mr. Freeland on the decontamination process for 2020. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. There are no other questions, so we'll go ahead and proceed forward to the vote. Sherelle, can you assist us with the roll call vote, please?
Okay, Honorable Vince James, how do you vote?
Delegate, Delegate James votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Eugene Sol, how do you vote?
Oh, it is.
Honorable Eugene Sol votes green. Honorable Otto Sol, how do you vote?
I agree.
Honorable Otto Sol votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Madam Chair Charles Newton, you have three in favor, zero opposed, two not voting, which is including Honorable Madam Chair Charles Newton not voting and Honorable Edmund Yasi absent, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Sherelle. So with that, Mr. Hawkinson, Mr. Freeland, thank you so much for the presentation. We look forward to getting the documents that this committee has requested. Your hereby excuse with, we did accept your report at this time. Thank you. So with that, committee members, we're going to go ahead and move down to the next item on the agenda. Report from Larry Chee, Fire Chief for the Navajo Nation Fire and Rescue Services on the San Juan County Fire Department Agreement. Actually, it should be on all of the, the fire agreements that are currently in place that we have with different fire departments off the Navajo Nation. It shouldn't be specific to San Juan. So I apologize, committee members, for that. I'll just go ahead and make that correction verbally. Mr. Chee, are you on the line? Mr. Chee, are you on the line? Star six if you need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. I was trying to unmute and I pressed the wrong button here.
Thank you, Mr. Chee, for joining us. We are requesting a report from you on all of the fire department agreements that Navajo Nation has with the various fire departments that are off the Navajo Nation. It's very similar to what PD does with their various police departments as well. We'd like to get a report on that. So with that, committee members, can I get a motion and a second to hear the report from Mr. Larry Chee, Fire Chief for the Navajo Nation Fire and Rescue Services?
It is not, there you see.
Motion made by Honorable Eugene. Can I get a second?
Second, Delegate James.
Second by Delegate James. Mr. Chee, you have presented before this committee before. The rules have not changed. You do have 15 minutes to provide your presentation. If you need an additional five minutes, you can request from the committee. If there are no objections, the committee will give you an additional five minutes. During the, during this time, you can present to us and you can have up to two agents who are allowed to answer questions with you on this presentation as well. Again, I will remind everybody that Law and Order Committee has a zero tolerance rule for your phone not being on mute. If your phone is not on mute and we hear conversations, we will hang up the line from you the first time. If you do it again the second time, you will not be allowed to enter back into the committee. So with that, Mr. Chee, do you have any questions on the process and the procedure for presenting before the Law and Order Committee at this time?
No, I don't.
So with that, Mr. Chee, the floor is yours to present to this committee. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair and committee members and others that are listening in. Well, she had, uh, that's not okay. Although, should should I do, although my position with the Navajo Nation Fire Service. Although, eh, uh, twice, I mean, so I'm not watching, I see here, that's another door. Oh, honey, that's a tree. We say it with that, that's the Chinese though. He said Chinese, I'd eh. No, no, that's. That's the thing needs, so that's why I'm fun. So she had none of, although. I do have information on the. Um. Report that was asked on behalf of the. LOC Committee and um. We do have uh, MOAs in place. Um, as noted and introduced uh, this. Um, this afternoon or towards noon. Um, those MOAs are in effect as we're talking unless. Uh, the um. Agreement parties from one side decides to. Change the agreement or not. So it depends on if the. If the um, party, one party says, no, we need to change this, and then we have to go back to the agreement. And go back through DOJ and then. Through the President and then finally get supported by the. Um, committee. Uh, in this case, it will be the Law and Order Committee. So that's the process for renewal. Other than that, there are dates on the existing MOAs. Uh, but it does say that unless. Um. Otherwise changed by parties uh, in in the agreement. So that's what we're going by. Um, we do have um. In the written agreement with San Juan County, New Mexico. Although, we do have one for Gallup. Do you have one for um. Pico Valley, we do have one for Gannado. Uh, those are the four um. Um, non Navajo agencies that we have agreements with. But uh, yes, we do also understand that. Uh, these agreements were signed back in. Um. It looks like um. Back to uh, two thousand and five. So what we recently did is um. We resubmitted for a new version of the agreement. To DOJ from our office, from Fire Administration. That um, to revisit and to uh, possibly. Rewrite the agreement, so it's more more up to date with new language and whatnot. So that's what we've done in uh, last year of um. Looks like September twenty twenty, eh, don't we updated the agreement through um. Daniel Watts's office with Navajo Nation DOJ and we confirm. A new agreement that was um furnished by DOJ, so. We're currently going to go ahead and uh, reset mit the new agreement back to the. Agencies that I I'm talking about, so. Um. It took some time to get that um, agreement rewritten, so. Uh. On the other hand, it also takes time. To have outside agencies to agree to a legal document. So they have to involve their. Uh, legal department and our legal department here at DOJ, so they have to talk about the document itself, the language. And then add on that they, if both agree, they sign on both sides. Then it goes back to um. Force the process through. The one sixty-four and then back to the committee, so. Uh, that's the process that we're following. Uh, it's a lengthy process and it it does take time. So just to give you a brief update as to my report on the MOA was specifically for San Juan County. New Mexico and also um. Other um, counties that I mentioned and and cities that we have an agreement with. Madam Chair.
Thank you for sharing that information with us, Mr. Chee. Um, so I guess my my question and perhaps I I missed it, but. How many agreements do we currently have? Uh, that I I guess affect our services. Uh, and then how of those that we that we currently have with outside. Fire uh, fire departments. How many are up to date? And how many need to be revised, amended, or maybe um. We need to go back to the table uh, to talk a little bit more about these um, agreements because. Uh, we were not, I I don't believe perhaps we were, this information was shared with us at one time. Uh, but I was surprised to hear about the agreement with um, San Juan County and how. That um, agreement was actually way past due. I think it's two years. It's it it hasn't been renewed. Um, and so I think this committee, you know, should have been made aware that the agreements. Um, were not in place and we currently are having this issue right now with police department where. Um, we haven't been given a list of all of the police departments that we currently work with outside of the Navajo Nation that provide services to. Our Navajo people, and I know that Chair Daniel So is on the line. Eastern Agency is affected. Um, by the um, you know, by by the crimes that are happening there in Eastern Agency. Uh, and they're asking for um, you know, assistance from sheriff and state. So as a committee, we do try to ask, you know, if these agreements are in place. We often get from. Uh, Director Delmar that he will look into it, uh, but we haven't got a full listing yet. Um, I I would like to request that this time as Chair of Law and Order Committee that we get a listing. Of all the agreements that are in place right now uh, between the Navajo Nation Fire Department and Rescue and those that we. Um, seek that are outside of the Navajo Nation. Um, we need to know what, you know, uh, one, we need to know how many agreements are, two, we also need a list that identifies. Which communities are affected by these.
Madam Chair, part of order, it's it.
Uh, Delegate Eugene So.
By point of order. Reports say San Juan Fire and Rescue will cry eighty by eighteen percent. Or we're going to make it bigger, we should have it into another agenda, but now we're San Juan. Fire and service, rescue service, thank you.
Uh, Delegate So, at the beginning, I did uh, state that that. Uh, part of the agenda was uh, was wrong, that it does affect all of the agreements on the Navajo Nation. Um, if you as a delegate want to just stick to San Juan County. Um, we can do that, but I think it is important uh, that this committee hears all of the agreements. Uh, that are currently in place with the Navajo Nation and the Fire Department and Rescue. Um, but again, if you would like to just stick to San Juan County, we can do that and we can address this issue at a separate time. Um. I'll leave that to the committee members to decide on how they want to proceed forward.
I second the agenda as is.
Okay, Delegate Eugene So, so um, per your request, you don't want to hear about the entire Navajo Nation, you want to hear only about San Juan County, is that correct?
So it's all but caught or something on us now, so we can put it in a different, different uh, meeting, thank you.
Okay, we can definitely do that. So uh, Mr. Chee, San Juan County is the area that affects my community. Here in Shiprock, I I was trying to be um, I guess fair to all of the delegates. Um, and the entire, like the Navajo people by asking if we can get this information regarding the entire Navajo Nation, but uh.
Question of privilege, Delegate James.
I'm sorry, was that Delegate James?
Yeah, question of privilege, Delegate James.
Delegate James, go ahead, the floor is yours.
Um, my question um, is going to pertain to. Uh, suspension of the floor rule. Uh, to make an amendment. Um, to make that adjustment to our agenda. Can I make that motion to suspend the floor rules to listen in on all of the um, Fire Department throughout the whole Navajo Nation? A report from um, Mr. Larry Chee. That'd be my point of order question, point, point of which, point of privilege question.
Um, so yes, you can do that, but not when you're raising a question or a point of privilege, uh, Delegate James, you can do that. Um, in fact, uh, the presentation has been provided to us. I was just hoping to get a little bit more information, so I. Jumped the gun, um, so I'm going to go ahead and recognize uh, Delegate Vince James. Um, since uh, since we are at the question portion, Delegate James, the floor is yours.
Um, Madam Chair, thank you for that response. Um, in regards to suspension of the floor rules, I'd like to make that motion to hear a report on all of the. District Fire Departments throughout the Navajo Nation from Mr. Larry Chee. Thank you, making that motion.
Colleagues, a motion has been made uh, to extend the report to not only San Juan County, but the entire Navajo Nation. Uh, can I get a second?
My chair will second that, thank you.
And this is a suspension of the floor rules um, to amend the agenda to include not only San Juan County, but the entire. Navajo Nation, so we can get a report from the chief. Of Fire Department and Rescue. We do have a motion and we have a second. Are there any questions or comments at this time regarding this uh, motion to suspend the floor rules to amend the agenda? Not hearing anything, we're going to go ahead and proceed forward to the vote. Sherelle, can you assist us with the roll call vote please?
Okay, Honorable Vince James, how do you vote?
Delegate James votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote? Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote? Honorable Otto So, how do you vote?
I vote green, Otto So.
Uh. Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote? Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Madam Chair Charles Newton, you have two in favor, zero opposed, three not voting, which is including. Honorable Madam Chair Charles Newton not voting. Honorable Eugene So not voting and Honorable Edmund Yasi absent, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Sherelle. So the vote has been taken.
So. The cheater is, uh, thank you.
Uh, Sherelle, can you um. Note that Honorable Eugene So votes red?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So with that, we have vote has been taken, two in favor, one opposed, two not voting. Uh, to suspend the floor rules, to change the agenda. Uh, to include the entire Navajo Nation and not just San Juan County. Um, in terms of the agreements that are in place for between the Navajo Nation Fire Department and Rescue Services. Um, to those uh, fire departments and rescue services that are off the Navajo Nation. Uh, the vote to suspend the four rules has passed, so with that, um. Lorraine, I just remind me very quickly, in this event, do we need to uh, read the changes on the agenda for the record? Or do we just go ahead and proceed forward? Can you provide me some guidance on that?
Madam Chair and members of the Law and Order Committee. Um. I can make the change, the changes on the agenda and then um, repost it again. With all, um. To include Navajo Nation Fire and Rescue Services. On the Navajo reservation. Not just San Juan, so I can just include Navajo Reservation.
Thank you, let's go ahead and make that change. Uh, so with that, uh, Mr. Chee, the change has been made. I know you did provide us some information. Um, but I'm going to go ahead and at this time ask if you want to amend your presentation at this time to provide this committee information regarding the Fire and Rescue. Uh, the uh, services that are provided to the Navajo people.
Madam Chair, can we, we, Madam Chair, it's it.
Honorable Eugene So.
Recession for thirty minutes, let him catch his stuff together so we can eat also. That's for thirty minutes.
Um. Committee members, there's been a request to go into recess. Uh, Honorable Eugene So wants to give the presenter thirty minutes to prepare his presentation to include information regarding the Navajo Nation. And he's also requested some time to also eat his lunch. I I believe he said to eat. Um, so I think it's important that we, it is twelve fourteen. Um, I think it's important that we uh. That we do eat of of, and so, uh, Shizha, Honorable Eugene So, I'm not going to take a a vote. I'm just going to go ahead and use my authority as chair to call a recess. Uh, for thirty minutes, which will allow um, those of us who have health issues, you know, to eat. Um, and then also to allow the presenter to present or to gather his information for a more thorough presentation. Uh, Mr. Chee, are you good with that?
Uh, I was ready to um, just give you numbers and who we have contracts with. I think that's what the committee is asking for, and I do have all of them available.
Okay, let's just go ahead and take a really quick recess. If you could send us that information, Mr. Chee, we also have um, Health Education Human Services who are on the line. Um, if you can email that information to Lorraine, she can send that out to. Uh, those of us who are on the call so that we can follow along with the information that you're going to be prepared or that you'll be presenting to this committee. So with that. We're going to take a thirty minute break, return back at twelve forty-five. Um, to continue with the presentation with Mr. Larry Chee. So with that, committee members, let's take a break. We're going to recess for lunch. We're going to recess for lunch.
So that document was just kind of briefly show that the order forward or present in MOA as far as written MOA. And they have not been updated since 2006 like I reported earlier. We were working with DOJ to update the MOA itself. So again, we just got that a few months ago. So we're going to go ahead and resubmit the new MOAs to the ones that are in place. And then also you'll see on that document also the ones that are pending that were submitted. With awaiting signatures. So but we'll follow it up with those agencies of seven with the new format. So you'll see the you'll see particularly the one in question with San Juan County. There's there's one in place already. And then the others, you'll see the others that prickled, Bernardo Gallup, they're in place. So we'll follow up with the new MOA. The ones that are pending are San Juan County, Utah, McKinley County, New Mexico, Page, Black, Hopi, Hobo, and Winslow. So if you can, if you see the document, that's what it that's what it reads. Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Mr. Jean. Yes, I'm looking at the Word document right now. So committee members, are there any questions or comments at this time?
Vice Chair Otto Sow, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Again, my question is what the information provided to the during the email. On the list of of the MOAs that are in place. And I believe I believe the way I understand these these MOAs, they're limited but to assist. The way I see these these one through four. And they're not fully really probably authorized to really, really, really try to. Well, I mean, I mean, the assist part is right. And that's just something that I have there. The other is that I don't know why we still have Flagstaff. Flagstaff should have already been. I believe that that agreement was not renewed because of the Twin Arrow Facility. Then the and then because we have the police substation there. And as the substation is 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 was built, we opt out to not allow the not allow the. Coconut County to be able to provide that service to for the casino there. And that's the way I understand that. So I maybe maybe I may be wrong. Maybe that agreement is still in place. But to what I was what I understand from gaming that 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 agreement was not in place. So I guess as these pending fire response MOAs. I guess what I would like to request is in writing is something that is all in like a written update for each category. And that way we can go ahead and have a just just a quick synopsis on it. So that so that we can have these type of these type of updates for those areas. The other is that I know that the San Juan agreements that were in place have expired for the eight. Eight, I believe it's eight facility. And then Navajo Nation chose to to take it over themselves. And that's like Newcom Fire Department, Oahu Amaro, Shiprock, and a couple others more in San Juan County. And that 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 agreement, an agreement was in place where the nation agreed to. Work with the county for so many years. And then at some point, the county indicated that we need the nation to offer input some money. And the nation did not want to do that at the time. It was the Russell, it was begin or yeah, beginning their administration. They decided to opt out and they didn't want to work with the county. So that agreement is probably gone in San Juan County. And that throws all the fire department in San Juan County back on to the burden of the Navajo Nation. When the, you know, I don't know where what the status is on the, I guess. What is how is the progress on those facilities taken over fully under Navajo control? Where are we at? How is the operation? Because it's a whole different story when you go visit the fire department. Really tell you things. And that's where I really want you guys to, or I guess I want Mr. Mr. Sheen to 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 provide that, you know, what type of upgrades and and additional resources that they have provided for those. Fire departments that they have taken over. The other is the fire departments that are actually. Like the fire department in the loop. Oh, I think and I think I think someone just sweeps out the sweeps out the fireplace there or the the building there. But nobody occupying it. And I guess I run down a status, a status report on a on 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 the fire, fire department condition on each of the. And then also you'll see on that document also the ones that are pending that were submitted with awaiting signature. So but we'll follow it up with those agencies of seven with the new format. So you'll see particularly the one in question with San Juan County, there's one in place already. And then the others, you'll see the others that Perco, Geronado, Gallup, they're in place. So we'll follow up with the new MOA. The ones that are pending are San Juan County, Utah, McKinley County, New Mexico, Page, Black, Hopi, Hobo, and Winslow. So if you can, if you see the document, that's what it, that's what it reads. Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chi. Yes, I'm looking at the Word document right now. So. Committee members, are there any questions or comments at this time?
Madam Chair.
Vice Chair Otto So, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Again, my question is with the information provided through the email. On the list of the MOAs that are in place. And I believe, the way I understand these MOAs, they're limited but to SIS. The way I see these, these one through four. And they're not fully really probably authorized to really, really, really try to. Well, I mean, I mean, the SIS part is right. And that's just something that I have there. The other is that I don't know why we still have Flagstaff. Flagstaff should have already been. I believe that that agreement was not renewed because of the Twin Arrow Facility. Then the, and then, because we have the police substation there. And as the substation is, was built, we opt out to not allow the, not allow the. Kokino County to be able to provide that service for the casino there. And that's the way I understand that. So I, maybe, maybe I may be wrong, maybe that agreement is still in place. But to what I was, what I understand from gaming, that that agreement was not in place. So I guess as these pending fire response MOAs. I guess what I would like to request in writing is something that is all in like a written update for each category. And that way we can go ahead and have a, just a quick synopsis on it. So that, so that we can have these type of, these type of updates for those areas. The other is that I know that the San Juan agreements that were in place have expired for the eight, I believe it's eight facility. And then Navajo Nation chose to, to take it over themselves. And that's like Newcom Fire Department, Oahu Amarillo, Shiprock, and a couple of others more in San Juan County. And that, that agreement, an agreement was in place where the nation agreed to. Work with the county for so many years. And then at some point, the county indicated that we need the nation to offer input to money. And the nation did not want to do that. At the time, it was the Russell, it was, yeah, Begine's administration. They decided to opt out and they didn't want to work with the county. So that agreement is probably gone in San Juan County. And that throws all the fire department in San Juan County back onto the burden of the Navajo Nation. You know, I don't know where, what the status is on the, I guess. What is, how is the progress on those facilities taken over, fully under Navajo control? Where are we at? How is the operation? Because it's a whole different story when you go visit the fire department. Really tell you things. And that's where I really want you guys to, or I guess I want Mr. Mr. Chi to provide that, you know, what type of upgrades and additional resources that they have provided for those fire departments that they have taken over. The other is the fire departments that are actually. Like the fire department in Loop. Oh, I think, I think, I think someone just sweeps out the, sweeps out the fireplace there or the building there. But nobody occupying it. And I guess I run down a status, a status report on a, on, on the fire, fire department's condition on each of the, each of the facility. Clear out the Navajo Nation would be great because I know that Honorable So, Daniel So is on the line. As Honorable Daniel So talks about fire and rescue in his area. You may have that. And as we get these reports from, from, from public safety, you know, these things are not really as a general report to the committee. Because Eastern is sort of a, under the, under the dark skies. You know, what is the progress of a lot of the structures there? And I don't, the other thing too is that I know that the fire apparatus. Fire equipment. And when are we gonna be able to have all the fire equipment and the fire apparatus purchased for each of the fire department? Because a lot of them, they are, they are outdated. The other is that communities such as the Perco Valley and the Geronado Fire District, the Kianta Township. And the. I think those are just the three immediately right now. That I think we need to go back to the drawing table. Is that we need to pull out that one percent sales tax legislation back out. And redefine and get a certain amount of allocation to those fire departments. Because they service our Navajo people in that area. Even Kianta Township. I went by there and I was like, you know, like, can we get the nation to somewhat, or somehow help us? And then I just asked questions such as, things like, you know, do you guys communicate with the fire department in Wonder Rock? And do you talk to them? Do they, do they even, do they even assist you guys to say, hey, maybe it's a pitch that we can do into the comprehensive budget? And a comprehensive budget. Is there any request that was made for, you know, those fire departments that services our Navajo people? But we have to find a way to get a chair for the area for. For instance, like Geronado. There's, then you have that Perco Valley. So why don't we amend the legislation and indicate that the sales tax, that one cent sales tax that's collected in Hatari and up in Kankakee area. Those will be divided up for those other, those other entities for Perco Valley and, and Geronado Fire District. And we include the language for Kianta Township. All that one percent sales tax collected for Kianta Township. Within Kianta Township, we could leave those dollars there so it could service the people of the community of Kianta. Because certainly the Kianta Fire Department services a large radius, the area. Even though it's not, it's not their appropriate fire district, but they go out there. And they support that. And it's really baffling to hear that from Honorable Brown. That Kianta Fire District does not get any type of direct funding from the general fund to try to assist that. And that's like as far as. Those are just some of my thoughts that I have. And I really hope that, you know, Mr. Chi could give us a rundown on each of the. I guess a synopsis of where each of the buildings at. We have, we have, we have an update on it. Instead of just telling it verbally, but the information that's provided. This lists towns, lists certain things. So even a little bit more information on that. If Mr. Chi would like to really refine his report, maybe I can, on the whole Navajo Nation Fire Department District. Maybe I can go ahead and move table this report for the next LOC meeting. So that we give Mr. Chi time for all of the status updates of the Navajo Nation Fire Districts. Across the Navajo Nation as Honorable Vince James amended the report. That way we have a thorough report out because one thing. You know, that, that report, we really need to get it out to the delegate districts. Because these individuals, these delegates start talking about it. Honorable Thomas Walker. So those are something that I, I think, and we need a thorough synopsis on all of the facilities where we're at. And we know where, you know, the large communities are at, but the smaller communities. Or I don't, the other thing too is that Honorable Alona Fire Department. And how is the current fire department utilizing to pick up a lot of the dark zones out at the local level? You know, for instance, you know, is Tohachi, is Tohachi covered from Wonder Rock Fire Department? Why not ambulance by another, or why not fire truck by another? Does the fire truck come from the county? Or does it come from, does it come from the city of Gallup? Or does it come from the nation who has to travel about maybe thirty, thirty miles from Wonder Rock to Tohachi? Maybe even, even forty miles. And if you have a full, the way I understood it was that if a fire truck has, is full of water. Only go about fifty-five miles per hour. That was the older engine. I'm not too sure how the current engines are. I know we have new, new, new fire engine, but you know, what are those response times? With that, you know, the information that we have is very, very vague. Madam Chair, I'm gonna move to table this report for the next, for the next LOC committee. So that we give Mr. Chi, Captain Chi, the, the. Allow him to get full information across the Navajo Nation Fire Department's status. And update. Yeah, he can tell us verbally, but when it comes to things such as. I don't, the committee, the police, Fire Department Chief. It's really not much to refer back to. And that is one of the reasons that I think that we need a report, a thorough report from him. So that we have a thorough update on the nation's status of the. Of our fire department. Because just a verbal report and small information here and there is really not benefiting the Navajo people and whoever's on the line here. But again, I do have that information there. And that is, or that's gonna be my request there. But before I have Madam Chair honor this, I wanted to see how the committee members feel. Because, you know, I think this is a, a really, really, really good subject. Because for instance, in Perco Valley, fire happens on Navajo. The Perco Valley Fire Department will come out and charge the Navajo family, will actually send them a bill. If there's an agreement, why is that Navajo family being charged? Or then at the same time, these proposed agreements that are being sought. You know, how far are they, each, each individual agreement? Where is the progress? Who reached out to who? And who said what? And what did the county, what did Apache County say? What did Navajo County say? What did Kokino County say? So these counties are, especially McKinley County, and you have the counties in Eastern Navajo. McKinley, Sandoval, San Juan, and things like that. I know we had a conversation with the Utah Navajo, the San Juan Navajo. And I remember we had the San Juan, Utah Commission come out, was on the call at one point, indicating that we want to work with Navajo. But I have not heard or haven't seen the Navajo Nation progress on the Monza Valley Fire Station. But I think the Monza Valley Fire Department, or Jito Fire Department, whatever it's called, was supposed to have an agreement. So that they work with each other to try to help with each other, each other with cost. And instead of, instead of just having one entity taking over. Because I remember the individual indicated that it's better for, for the two of us to work together. So I think we need to respark that conversation. And I really hope that our fire chief is in communication with the Monza Valley Fire Department up there in San Juan County, Utah. And continue those talks because it's very, it is very, very important. Because that fire department only services Utah area. And then Kianta Fire Department comes out to. On Arizona side of Ojito. So we have to have some kinks to talk about to try to get those going. So I just wanted to see if the, how the committee members feel. I wanted to see if they, how they can weigh in on this. And if that is, is the mind. And then just come back to me, Madam Chair, and I can go ahead and move to table this report and give to the next meeting. And have Mr. Chi give us a thorough, thorough report on the, 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 the status of the overall nation's fire department. I, 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 I know that he's probably busy. And I think if we allow him time to get, get information out to him. We can have, we can get the information out to him so that all of this. You know, he has time to get his staff to look into it so that we can finish this thing up. But I appreciate this at this time, Madam Chair. For now.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you for making that suggestion. Committee members, the motion has been made to table this legislation. What I would like to ask is at this time, before I ask for a second. If we could send in our request to Mr. Chi on what information we would like known. And then also, I think that it would only be fair if we include the entire 24th Navajo Nation Council. Because looking at this document right now, we do have San Juan County, which does affect the Northern Agency delegates. I'm assuming most definitely Honorable Rick Nas, Honorable Amber Prady, and myself. There's Perco Valley, Arizona, Geronado, Arizona, which affects Delegate Vince James. But there may be other delegates in that area that the, that this MOA may affect. Gallup, New Mexico. So there's some Eastern agencies that are affected. For the pending, we have San Juan County, Utah. We have our Utah delegates who will be affected by this. McKinley County, New Mexico, Page, Arizona, Flagstaff, Arizona, Hopi, Arizona, Holbrook, Arizona, and Kankakee, Arizona. So before I ask for a second, I did get a text message from Delegate Vince James. Delegate Vince James, I'm gonna go ahead and recognize you at this time with the request that you're gonna have for Mr. Chi. Delegate Vince James?
Thank you, Madam Chair, other Vice Chair. Although members of the Law and Order Committee, although our colleagues, members of the 24th Navajo Nation Council that are on the line. Although Mr. Chi, Fire Chief Chi, thank you for being on the line as well. I do agree with Mr. Otto So that we would need a thorough report in regards to written reports that needs to be provided to LOC. And so, so with that, I'd like to make a request to also to you of what my expectation will be to get information from you in regards and table this report. So I know that fire and rescue sales tax numbers have been changing. And so in one of your business, not business, in one of your budget documents, you've indicated for the fire and rescue sales tax funds in seven million seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand. If you can provide us an update. And then at the same time, you also have Navajo Nation Fire and Rescue at Twin Arrow for seventy-five thousand five hundred. And then in another document, you have sales tax, fire and rescue, two million five hundred and forty thousand. So there's, there's numbers that are flitterating in your documents that was provided to LOC. And at the same time, I believe when we last had you before LOC, we also indicated for documents to be forward to us. And in this case, it's the LOC MA 06-18, amending the plan of operation for Navajo. Department of Fire and Rescue Services. So, in that plan of operation, uh, you reference certain themes in that plan of operation in regards to the different, um, facilities that are on the Navajo Nation. In such cases, one of them was specified, um, regarding Gnotto Fire District. So, when are we going to receive that plan of operation, um, from you in regards to that? At the same time, um, also, it was also requested on why there was a low rating, um, assessment scores that was, um, forward to us for the fiscal year 2021 for, for third quarter. The, 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 the low rating was, um, a little bit, um, a little bit of, uh, improvement from the first and second quarter. Um, and, and I'm referring to the business unit number five-one-six-zero-zero-two. And in this Department of Fire, uh, Rescue Service, um, you did indicate that you had, uh, your assessment scores of your first quarter as one point four and then your second quarter as one point four and then your third quarter as one point eight. And unfortunately, fourth quarter, we haven't received yet. And so, the question in regards to that was how did we, and where did we improve or which area did we improve due to the fact of what was indicated and what was brought forth to you, um, of how your response will be within ten minutes, um, reducing time, no less than ten minutes per quarter? And that was coming from, from, from you. And my information that I would like to see in your report that you'll be providing to us is what kind of plan did you have in place to come to that point of, um, reducing your time to less than ten minutes and, uh, to, per quarter? So, how, how was that plan affiliated with the current staff? And I, I would like to make that request to see that plan, um, of your upcoming report. Um, my, my next one is another plan that I would like to see, again, it's coming from you, to minimize the reaction time of, um, utilization of the fire suppression and then also the, um, rescue and medical. And those are the areas that you also justified and you've also indicated to minimize, to minimize that reaction time. So, what, how did you get to that portion and how, what is the plan to affiliate and move forward with this, um, reaction time for fire suppression, rescue and, uh, medical? Again, uh, coming from you, you did also indicate to increase the number of personnel to adequately respond to an incident. Uh, you did indicate that to us as well. And so, what is the plan of that as well? And I would like to see that in your upcoming report. And, and another one was, you did also indicate that adequate deployment of personnel to emergency calls. And that was one of the areas that I would like to also see, um, to make sure that what plans were in place with your immediate staff to get to this point? And so, what kind of adequate development of personnel to, to deployment, uh, to the emergency calls do you have in place? And so, these are some of the areas that I'm, I'm really looking forward to. And I, I know, I would also like to see how these informations were submitted and forwarded to your fire districts throughout the Navajo Nation. Since you do have MOU's in place with all of the fire districts throughout the Navajo Nation, how did you disseminate this information to all the districts to be in compliance with the information that you have provided, um, from your office to, uh, LOC and then also to your division director and having it put on record, um, for you? And another one is that you did indicate that, um, you, you did indicate that twenty-four, uh, fire prevention and safety classes to the communities. Um, which of the twenty-four communities are we talking about? Are we talking about the communities that you have MOU's with? Or are we talking about other communities? Which twenty-four communities are, are you justifying that you've indicated that you, you would provide that prevention and safety classes to the communities? If you can provide that information in your upcoming report, that would be, um, really helpful. And I'm trying to figure out why these informations were not shared with LOC, but I, I think in your upcoming report, that's when you will provide this information. Another area that you've also indicated was that to reduce the number of, uh, fires such as structure fires, wild land and trash on the Navajo Nation. Again, how did the collaboration effort happen with all of the district's fire departments throughout the Navajo Nation? So, if you can share that with, um, LOC, that would be very helpful. And you do, you did also indicate that you would provide training to, for firefighters in-house. How is that going? Is that actually being performed? Did you perform those in your first and second and third quarter of this fiscal year? And how many of them received those in-house on certification training and the state certifications that are in place for each of the position that are justified for each of the firefighters? So, if you can provide that information to us in the upcoming report, that will be very helpful as well. And, um, you've also indicated that, um, you will conduct continuously, um, the fire inspection per quarter. Is this own, is this inspection only done at Wenderock or is it done at all of the facilities? And the, also with the fire districts that you have MOU's with? These are some of the critical information that I would like to see because the reason why I say this is I had brought forth the legislation for Gnotto Fire District. And if these informations were forwarded to all of the districts that you have MOU's with in your current, our current Navajo Nation Fire Districts, um, what kind of fire inspection was done on, um, Gnotto Fire Department? Because we do have outdated vehicles and currently Gnotto Fire District is operating by a suburban because of their, um, ambulance unit equipment facility is in the repair shop. And so, to that extent, how are you relaying these information? And, and I'm assuming that if my Gnotto Fire District is going through the same similar, these kind of issues, I'm assuming that's all the other fire districts throughout the Navajo Nation through something similar in the same situation. And, and, and it's saddened to, to hear that, the story of my colleague Honorable Don the Daniel Brown going through the same problem with Kienta. And, and I'm assuming that, um, similar issues have been also been coming forward, um, from my colleague Honorable, um, Chicheh, Daniel Seals area as well. So, these are the reason why I'm asking about what kind of, um, continuous fire inspection per quarter have you done that you have indicated for first quarter, second quarter and third quarter? Lastly, uh, I would like to also receive some information of how your plan is in regards to the fifty-two positions that you have within your district, within your program. You do have fifty-two total positions that have been forward to us at LOC. And out of those fifty-two total positions, you have twenty-seven positions filled, meaning that there's twenty-five vacancies, um, in your department. What is the plan to move forward to justify your area of how to fulfill these duties to fill these positions? And I know in, in the information that you provided to us, the information that you have provided to us does not indicate of how many positions are within each of the agency. In this case, I'm assuming it would be of the listing that you forward to us. Um, how many positions are, are for each of the positions, the MOU's that you have provided to us just, um, a, a, a few minutes ago? So, um, if you can also provide that information in your upcoming report, that will be helpful. And, uh, I'm, I'm really trying to narrow down the information of how I can get this information out to my colleagues to say, hey, this is what we are going to hear with the fire department. But then at the same time, when we as delegates ask for equipments or supplies and we ask, um, for support and to get assisted, especially with those districts that you have MOU's with, I've always been referred back to, hey, well, we have, um, the fire and rescue sales tax funds. And when it comes down to it, why is that fire and rescue sales tax only used on, um, the Navajo Nation Fire Department but not with the other MOU's, uh, agreements that have been in place? So, with that, I would like to make those my, uh, recommendation to hear those report, uh, in your upcoming report. Um, I, I will be expecting these out of, um, kindly with all due respect to receive this information that I shared with you. And that is fifteen different information that I would be, um, looking forward to. Um, Fire Chief, uh, Mr. Larry Chi. With that, I, I will go ahead and make the, um, second motion to table with the request of my fifteen, uh, reports that I would like to, um, hear as well. Thank you for the time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Shana, Vince James. I was trying to keep up in, uh, writing your request. I, I didn't, um, I wasn't able to keep up. So, if you could email that, and again, colleagues, as the committee members, if we could, um, send an email to Mr. Chi. Uh, he is on the Navajo Nation email address, uh, I guess the, 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 uh, the address book for Navajo Nation. Uh, you could access his email and send him the, what you want him to report on. Uh, that way, we're all on the same page. Um, and when you send them an email, if you could CC, um, all of us in that, uh, Law and Order Committee so that we are aware of what the requests are. Um, and so, there is a motion to table this report and to hear at a later date based on the information that we'll be sending to Mr. Chi. Uh, committee members, is there a second?
Delegate James makes a second.
Delegate Vince James, second the motion. So, with that, committee members, are there any questions or comments regarding the motion to table this report?
Madam Chair, I don't think this is a baby, baby motion.
To table the legislation. Uh, only at council, it's not debated. We're at a committee meeting. Uh, so with that, committee members. Delegate Eugene Seau?
Oh, sure. We're at a committee meeting. I thought all the rules of order are the same. I got us on Navajo. Sure. We motion and the second one to put it on. So, we put it on there. And we put it on there. Um, the community, that's not the, they're playing backwards. No, we, we don't look at the watershed or the data precipitation that we are, not the people population. What is needed for the community is to develop, where the, and where the funds are to come from. PT Fire, the first responders. And the issue of funds for these first responders. These municipalities, towns, cities. All checks. Because we always use, uh, funds from the, uh, gas. I mean, um, for the coal mine. But the community needs is these first responders that's first popular top priority. Because I don't know why we don't do that. And then, um, even though, uh, oversight committees don't think that way, they all have a final story. So, it's really the, uh, the health and education, um, human service and the, the resources. Only thing I have is Law and Order. So, but I do prefer to let the Navajo Nation always transport us to here just because. So, I would like it that we, uh, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Can you all hear me?
I can hear you, Eugene.
Okay, I had to, um, I apologize. I did get onto my phone. I lost connection. So, I, I did hear the beginning part of, uh, Delegate Eugene Seau's, uh, request and then also, uh, the, the, I guess, the later part of his request in terms of, um, I guess, getting information that needs to be shared, uh, with council. Um, is my understanding, I, I, I agree, um, which is why we are going to prepare questions ahead of time. Um, and, um, hopefully make that available to the delegates and, and, and welcome them and, and invite them to come to Law and Order Committee meetings. So, I, I think that that's, uh, the request that was made from Delegate Eugene. So, should I have that correct?
Now, the, it turned out, thank you.
Um, well, we, we can, like, request that, uh, through speaker, uh, but it's going to be up to speaker to put it on the Navi agenda. Uh, but we can make that motion on the floor. Uh, and then I think you're concerned as far as, or your comment regarding the council rules of order, um, Delegate Eugene Seau, uh, Title Two is the legislation that governs, um, council and the rules are in that. Uh, the council rules of order are just in a, like, the interpretation of the code is my understanding. And I, I'm looking in the code, uh, to see, you know, about the tabling. Um, and also, you know, the comment that you made about how that's debatable and non-debatable. I'm going to ask you, Delegate Eugene Seau, to read the code and to read the rules. Um, I could be wrong, but per the, uh, code and Dana, if you could assist me on this. Um, is there a rule regarding tabling motion at the committee level? Dana?
Dana, are you there? Yes, I'm here. I just had it unmute. My apologies. Um, yes, as far as, um, legislation, the tabling of legislation goes, it's, uh, actually, uh, the best place to reference that is in the code is under, uh, one sixty-four and give me.
Point of order?
Uh, point of order, was that Delegate James?
Uh, Otto Seau.
Oh, uh, Vice Chair Otto Seau, go ahead. You have the floor.
Uh, we're not, uh, tabling a, a legislation. We're tabling a report is what I understand. Is that correct?
Committee members, can I get a motion and a second for legislation number zero one six eight dash two one? Committee members, can I get a motion and a second for legislation number zero one six eight dash two one?
Vice Chair, Vice Chairman will second it. Or motion?
Uh, okay, Vice Chair, motion, can I get a second? Second call for a request for a second for legislation number zero one, zero one six eight dash two one. Last and final call for a second motion for legislation number zero one six eight dash two one. Okay, with that, Delegate Slater, it looks like legislation number zero one six eight dash two one will proceed forward. Uh, my understanding from previous legislation, yes. Hello? Hello?
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Um, I will, if you can hear me, I can, I've been trying to say a second, the motion. I don't even know how my video is not even showing. Anybody hear me?
Okay. Yes, we can hear you. Can you, can you hear us? Delegate James? So with that, uh, we do have a second, a motion made by Vice Chair Honorable Otto, so it's second by Honorable Vince James. Uh, committee members, we can do this two ways. One is we can, um, if we have questions, we will give the floor to Delegate Slater to present his legislation to the Law and Order Committee, and we can follow up with questions. Or if we don't have any questions and, uh, we understand the legislation zero one six eight dash two one, we can go ahead and proceed forward to the vote. So I'm going to ask committee members, are there any questions? I know that this is before the presentation, but are there any questions regarding legislation number zero one six eight dash two one? Uh, can anybody see if there's any questions from Honorable Vince James? I was on the Zoom call, but I was kicked out and I haven't got back on. I'm actually just on my phone. I'm logging in now. Honorable Vince James, if you can hear us and if you have any questions? Waves, 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 waves. Not hearing or not seeing any waving from Delegate Vince James. We're going to go ahead and we're going to proceed forward to the vote on legislation number zero one six eight, uh, dash two one. Uh, Sherelle, can you assist us with the roll call vote, please?
Okay, Honorable Vince James, how do you vote? Honorable Vince James, how do you vote? Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote? Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote? Honorable Otto So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Vince James, how do you vote? Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote?
Vote, please, thank you.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Vince James, how do you vote? Okay, Madam Chair, you have two.
Delegate Jane, I vote green.
Okay. Honorable Vince James votes green.
I have to log off on Zoom.
Okay, Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Madam Chair Charles Newton, you have three in favor, zero opposed. Two not voting, which is including Honorable Madam Chair Charles Newton, not voted, and Honorable Edmund Yasi, absent Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Sherelle. So with that, Delegate Slater, legislation zero one six eight dash two one has been acted upon here at Law and Order Committee. Now it does proceed forward to Health, Education, and Human Services. So with that Delegate Slater, uh, you are excused.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman. Appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. So now with that, committee members, we do move down to the next item on the agenda, new business. B is in Boil, legislation number zero one seven zero dash two one. Uh, the sponsor is Honorable Otto So. Uh, Lorraine, can we go ahead and get this legislation right into the record, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tracking number zero one seven zero dash twenty one, an actual aid to Law and Order, Budget, Finance, and Navikiya, two committees, approving and authorizing a contract between the Navajo Nation and the United States Department of Interior under twenty-five U.S.C., subsection three oh one, X.C. P.L. ninety-three, six thirty-eight, as amended, for a five-year term for the period beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, and ending September first, twenty twenty-six, for the Navajo Nation initial branch, tribal courts approving and authorizing the Navajo Nation initial branch, tribal courts, this year, twenty twenty-two, annual funding agreement, and some work attached as a zip name, which is a agreement with the Secretary of the Department of Interior and the Navajo Nation, and also included as a fiscal year, twenty twenty-two, annual, annual funding agreement between the Navajo Nation and the United States Department of Interior, Bureau of Interior, Navajo National Office, and there are, this is section one sixty-four, the uniform, tax grant, or be, not a bit removed, check on the application, award, and modification is attached, also Navajo Nation Department of Justice, um, it has gone through the five-day process, and this will move forward to Budget, Finance, and Navikiya tip. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you for that, Lorraine. So with that, we do have the sponsor, Honorable Otto So, who is on the line. Uh, committee members, can we get a motion and a second for legislation number zero one seven zero dash two one?
I want motion, Vice Chair. Vice Chairman will motion.
Okay, Vice Chair, I, I honestly, I can't remember, can a sponsor motion on their own legislation? Uh, let me ask. Dana, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I, I am on the line, um. Uh, and Rule eleven states that after the first reading of the legislation pursuant to Rule nine A or B, the chairperson shall introduce a motion to adopt from the floor of the committee. So your main mo- motion needs to come from the floor. Uh, oh, wait, excuse me. The motion, the motion shall be made by any member of the committee. So yes, uh, the sponsor can, uh, motion.
Thank you for that clarification, Dana. So with that motion made by Vice Chair Honorable Otto So, can I get a second?
In none of the case.
Honorable Eugene So makes the second. So with that, committee members, again, legislation zero one seven zero dash two one for the Law and Order Committee. We do not have final approval. Uh, at this time, I will ask committee members, after reading the legislation, are there any questions for the sponsor regarding legislation? Yes, Honorable Vince James, can we, we can hear you.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Oh, it's already been seconded by Honorable Eugene So.
Okay, I've watched it.
So with that, Law and Order Committee members, I know that the presenter hasn't presented on the legislation yet. Uh, but are there any questions, um, that you have on the legislation? Honorable Vince James, do you have any questions?
Chanelle, Madam Chair, no, I don't.
Honorable Eugene So, do you have any questions? Okay, so with that, Honorable Otto So, uh, there are no questions coming from the committee members regarding your legislation, so there's no need to present your legislation to the committee. With that, Sherelle, we're going to proceed forward to a roll call vote. Can you assist us with that, Sherelle?
Okay, Honorable Vince James, how do you vote?
Delegate James, I will vote green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote?
Vote, please, sir.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Otto So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Madam Chair Charles Newton, you have three in favor, zero opposed, two not voting, which is including Honorable Madam Chair Charles Newton, not voting, and Honorable Edmund Yasi, absent Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Sherelle. Legislation number zero one seven zero dash two one does proceed forward to Budget and Finance. Honorable Otto So, we thank you for your time, and we thank you for legislation number zero one seven zero dash two one. With that, we're going to go ahead and proceed forward to item number eight, close of special meeting. Honorable Vince James, um, at this time, you can motion to suspend the floor rules. If you want to do that.
Chanelle, Madam Chair, uh, yes, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session to hear a report from one of my constituents. Thank you.
So with that, committee members, there's a motion, uh, to suspend the floor rules, to amend the agenda, to include a report, uh, on the agenda, and the report will be provided to us by... Chanelle, if you can help me with this, I'm looking for the email.
Uh, Nathaniel Slivers?
Nathaniel Slivers. So with that, uh, committee members, um, there is a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
The motion.
Motion second by Honorable Otto So. So with that, committee members, uh, we are going, with this vote, we are going to amend the agenda to add a legis, or to add a report on to the agenda. The report will be given to us in executive session. Uh, so for those delegates who are currently on the line who wish to hear the, the report, uh, if you could just, um, email Lorraine and let her know that you want to be a part of it so that we can send out the executive session number, uh, to you. So, um, we do have a motion, a second on the floor. We'll go ahead and proceed forward to the vote. Sherelle, can you assist us with the roll call vote, please?
Okay, Honorable.
Honorable Eugene So, did you have a question?
Uh, Madam Chair, I would like to excuse myself from, so, executive session. Uh, I, 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 no, I, I, so, I'll excuse myself on, thank you.
Honorable Eugene So, um, you can excuse yourself. I don't really know, uh, what the executive session, like what information is going to be shared in executive session. Um, but yes, you, you can excuse yourself. So with that, um, Sherelle, if we can proceed to the roll call vote, please.
Okay, Honorable Vince James, how do you vote?
Delegate Jane's vote's green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote?
Vote, please.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Otto So, how do you vote? Honorable Otto So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Madam Chair Charles Newton, you have three in favor, zero opposed, two not voting, which is including Honorable Madam Chair Charles Newton, not voting, and Honorable Edmund Yasi, absent Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Sherelle. Again, uh, we don't really have the specifics as to what was, what's going to be shared with us in executive session. So we're going to go ahead and proceed forward, uh, to this request. With that, committee members, again, if you, um, Lorraine, do you already?
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes.
Lorraine, uh, we need to get the number from the Speaker's office staff for the, um, thank you.
Question of privilege.
Uh, oh, hold on, Honorable Eugene So, okay, Lorraine, what did you say, like, who do we contact at Speaker's staff for the number?
Um, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. We need to ask the Speaker's staff, um, to issue, uh, executive, um, session number.
Can you ask them for the number?
For now, are you on the line?
Good afternoon, everyone, this is Nikita. I'm on the line.
Um, Nikita, can we get a executive session number for LOC?
Yes, let me get with the communication staff right now.
Yes. Mail it, okay? Thanks.
Thank you for that, Delegate Eugene So.
A question, uh, what time was that? You're going to get out of the executive session, so I can call back, and, thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I did, uh, forget to include that. I apologize, uh, committee members, I forgot to ask how much time is needed to go into executive session. Honorable Vince James?
Um, Madam Chair, and members of LLC, at the most, I would say thirty minutes.
Thank you for that. So, uh, we are going into executive session. Uh, Dana, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Dana, I'm sorry. I'm going to need some guidance. I think I, I actually, uh, I, I think I, I may have killed, uh, two birds with one stone. I, we, we motioned, uh, to go to suspend the floor rules, to add some, an item to the agenda. Do we need to do a, a second, um, vote to go into executive session? Or, uh, was it okay that I combined both?
Um, I, I would just recommend you do do a second vote, uh, to go into executive session. That would, uh, make sure that nothing was missed.
Okay, thank you, Dana. I do apologize, committee members. So, uh, we do need a motion to go into executive session. A Delegate Vince James has requested thirty minutes, uh, for this executive session. Uh, again, um, it is a, a motion, or, or I need a motion and a second to go into executive session, committee members.
Delegate Jane will make the motion.
Delegate Jane makes the motion to go into executive session for thirty minutes. Can I get a second? Second request, I need a second to go into executive session. Last and final request to go into executive session for thirty minutes. Okay, uh, there, so with that, Chanelle, Honorable Vince James, I apologize, there was not a second to go into executive session, uh, which means that at this point, the report has been added on to the agenda. We will not go into executive session. Um, Dana, uh, I just, uh, want you to be on the line during this time. Is there anything that we should not be discussing, um, on, while we're on the record?
Um, thank you. I think, uh, that, um, just the, the presenter and the committee should be aware that, uh, if, uh, any, uh, litigation, i- if this report, or the matter in this report, uh, is, I, I guess it's not in litigation now, uh, but if liti- litigation, uh, follows, that anything discussed here, uh, can be used by the attorneys in any litigation matters. And I'm specifically, uh, thinking, and I, I don't, certainly don't know this, but if, uh, the presenter is, uh, having, uh, following anything with, up with, uh, the, um, Office of Navajo Nation Labor Commission, if there's an M.P.A. action, uh, forthcoming, uh, everybody should just be aware of that, that, uh, uh, what, what the presenter says can be, um, used at, uh, any type of trial, and what the delegates say can also, um, and so they could be called as a witness. So that's all I, I would say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Uh, Honorable Eugene So?
Uh, Dana, whatever is presented to us, would we be as LOCP liable if, if there's a name or something mentioned in it?
Point order.
But that name can't, that name can't complain against us.
Um, thank you, thank you, Delegate, uh, So, um.
Dana, there's a point of order.
Want to order Delegate Jane's?
Delegate Vince James, go ahead.
Uh, Chanelle, Madam Chair, and so we voted the first time around and to go into executive session. So, are we saying that's obsolete? And for the record, if that's the case, if you can make that known for the record, that, that wasn't recognized, the first, um, voting that we did. Um, and then, uh, the second voting was in regards to the thirty minutes, I guess. And then my other, um, point of order is, if we're not going to executive session, why are we continuing on to discuss the executive session if we're not going into executive session? Thank you.
Uh, Delegate James, um, I do apologize, the vote should have been separate, as Dana advised. So the first vote should have been on, um, suspending the, the floor rules to amend the agenda because we were at the close of the meeting. Um, and then there should have been a second vote to go into executive session. I made the mistake of combining them both, and I didn't put the timeline on there, which is why I asked Dana to provide some clarification on whether it was okay to do both at one time, or whether to do them separate. Uh, and Dana did advise that it's best to do them separate because it's on the record. Uh, so that was my fault, I do apologize for that. Um, but i- in terms of the executive session that you motioned for, we did not get a second. Uh, so we're not going into executive session. As to your second question regarding the, um, if we're not going into execu- executive session, why are we talking about it? I think it's just, uh, there was a request to go into executive session. So I, I, I think it's safe to assume that the information that's going to be provided is, could possibly be confidential, which is why we were requesting, which is why there was a request to go into executive session. Um, at the same time, I think, um, Delegate Eugene So is just a little bit concerned, um, because at this point, we don't know what's going to be discussed, but at the same time, we do know that there was a request to go into executive session. Um, so we know that the information that's going to be shared, we don't know at this point, um, if it's, uh, information that we, I guess that may have some effect to it. Um, so that, I think that that's where Delegate Eugene So was trying to get some clarification, um, before we actually start our report. I hope that, um, makes sense. Um, Dana, can you, uh, please, if, if you could clarify a little bit more, perhaps I'm wrong in this, Dana?
Um, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I think you did, uh, a good, uh, a, a good explanation. I think you covered all bases, uh, so, um, so if you look at, uh, Rule twenty-two, uh, Rule two, twenty-two, uh, does require a motion, um, to go into executive, uh, uh, session. And so that is the problem with combining the two, is that your rules actually require a, a, uh, discreet motion to go into executive session, which includes, uh, the length of time, who can be included in the executive session. Um, so putting them together, um, created, uh, is, uh, perhaps created some issues. So doing a separate motion to go into executive session is the, uh, uh, standard pro- process. Um, now that it was, uh, voted, going into executive session wasn't seconded. Um, I think that it is, uh, at the discretion of, uh, really the presenter, uh, being fully informed that the report will not be in executive, uh, session, uh, if they wish to, uh, go forward with it, and of course, the supporting or sponsoring, uh, 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 Delegate, Delegate Jane, as, as if they wish to go forth. Um, Madam Chair, would you like me to continue on and answer, uh, Delegate Eugene So's question?
Um, Delegate Vince James, I hope that explanation clarification is, uh, is good for you. So with that, Dana, um, you can go ahead and proceed to answering Delegate Eugene So's questions.
Follow-up question, Delegate Jane's here.
Uh, Delegate, uh, James, is that a, are you, are you raising a, um, a point of order? Or are you raising a point of privilege?
Um, I'll go ahead and raise a point of privilege. I just want to do a, um, follow-up question really quick.
Okay, Delegate Vince James?
Um, thank you. So with that, with the point of privilege, I'd like to, um, make it known that, so, if we do, if we are doing this, we're setting prefer, uh, precedent for our Navajo Nation employees not to approach any of the delegates of their issues at departments. And so that's the precedence that will be taking place here if we're not hearing this issue. So, uh, we shouldn't be asking staff to provide any, um, harassment or, uh, any issues that arise at their department level with their, uh, administration or, um, supervisor or so forth. So that's the way I'm understanding, um, the response back from our legal counsel. So as delegates, we need to, from here on out, if we get information from our call, um, constituents that work at departments, we just tell them we can't do anything, uh, because you're going to go through legal actions. So that's my, um, point of privilege, thank you.
Thank you, Delegate James. So with that, Dana?
Um, I don't disagree with Delegate James. The, uh, committees, as Legislative Council has advised, and... The committees, as Legislative Council has advised on numerous times, should not be hearing committee personnel complaints. Uh, there are processes set up and committee, hearing personnel complaints are not part of the committee's responsibilities or authorities. And I think that that's been discussed numerous times. Uh, perhaps the only time that you should be hearing such thing is, um, if the, the employee demonstrates that they have gone all the way up their chain of command, all the way to, if their executive branch, all the way up to the president. Um, and they have pursued all types of administrative proceedings that are available. Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Dana. And I do apologize, I didn't know this was a personnel matter. Um, so thank you for clarifying that, Dana. So with that, committee members, Honorable Vince James, do you still want to proceed with this report? Pernell, hello there.
Um, I would like to make, yes, I'd like to still move forward. It's not a personal matter when the person has resigned back in July. And I believe the PAF has already been approved and has gone through the system. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Honorable Eugene So, did you have a question?
I still want to hear my answer from Dana. Thank you.
Uh, Eugene So, I think Dana answered your question, but I'll, I'll turn the floor back over to Dana.
Okay, thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. All I was, so Delegate So asked if there was anything that the committee should be careful of hearing. Um, obviously, the committee cannot control what comes out of the presenter's part of their presentation. Um, my recommendation to the committee is just to be aware that, um, that anything said at this presentation, and that is from the presenter as well as the committee, it may be fodder for use in any subsequent litigation, if there is any. Um, and so just, you know, really, the, the most conservative approach for the committee members is just to hear what is, is stated. Uh, if you want to do some follow up questions, just be, be mindful that, that what you asked may be fodder in, in any litigation. Um, one of the things, as, as I've kind of previewed, previewed the report, I would be careful probably to the committee, there may be some, um, some complaints or, I'm not sure that's the word, but some challenges to how the matter was handled by certain individuals. Uh, I would be careful for asking anything specifically about those individuals. Uh, I hope that's helpful. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Delegate So.
Uh, this is starting to get just a little bit more complicated. I, I think that Delegate James, um, I know that there is a, there's a, a timeframe for when a person can actually bring a suit. What I, what I'm worried about is if it isn't, as you stated, this person was, was an employee, wants to share some information with us about, I'm not sure if it's about the employment or if it's about the, I guess maybe concerns, maybe that was happening within this person's workplace. I, I would think that that would be, and Dana, I, I don't know, maybe like a whistleblower thing. And I, I think there's like certain, um, procedures that you have to go through to make sure that the person is, is protected. Does, I mean, I guess, I'm, I'm just a little bit concerned on Honorable Vince James. Um, is it possible, maybe we can get a, a written report ahead of time from this individual so that we know what will be reported? Honorable Vince James?
Uh, Chanelle, Madam Chair, this is Delegate James again, and then members of LLC and members of the 24th Navajo Nation Council. Uh, I did forward you a letter, a letter of notes. I did forward a email of notes that I've retrieved and the information that I received as well to you guys.
Honorable James, I'm looking at my email. I don't see an email. The last email that I got from you was the pictures of the Gannato Fire District Suburban. I, I don't know why, why I'm not getting your emails.
Uh, Chanelle, Madam Chair, it's in the same email thread that I emailed at 12:16 PM.
Okay, um, Chanelle, I, I have a, a proposal for you. Um, is it possible that you and I meet with Mr. Silvers and then hear his concern? And then at that point, maybe I can then, you know, talk with Dana to see if that is something that's appropriate, that we could listen to out of executive session? So I'm willing to meet with you and Mr. Silvers to determine if this is something that we can put on the Law and Order Committee agenda. Um, is that something that we can do, Chanelle?
Uh, Madam Chair, that would be fine. Um, it's Mr. Slivers. Um, so I did, like I said, I did email it and that was my meeting with him, but I believe he's more willing to move forward with, um, meeting with us as well. And I think that the focus is that, you know, what he experienced, he doesn't want another employee to experience, even though he's a former employee now.
Okay, yes. Um, if we could maybe schedule a time to meet, I think that that would probably be the best thing because there's, there's just some concerns about what's going to be discussed here at Law and Order Committee. And again, you know, the request was to go into executive session, but I didn't get his second. Honorable Otto So just texted me and said he lost connection. Um, so that's why he wasn't able to hear what was going on and he's out of, he, he was heading into getting out of range for a little while. Um, but with that, if we could just schedule a separate meeting and then maybe we can share that information with Dana to see if that's something that the committee can hear the report on, I, I would really appreciate that, Chanelle, Honorable Vince James.
I'll be, motion to adjourn.
Okay, with that, thank you for that, Chanelle. So with that, we do have a motion. Uh, we were actually at announcements. Uh, the only announcement I think that, that we have from Law and Order Committee is that we do have a Title 17 meeting at 8:30 on Wednesday, the first. Uh, we do meet at the Law and Order Committee building. So I do want to remind my colleagues who are on the line about that, committee members. We also have a budget Navi Kiyosuke meeting on September 3rd, which is the Friday before Labor Day weekend. Uh, just as a reminder, committee members, that if there's not enough delegates, they probably will go to a two-person committee rule. Uh, so just as a reminder that that will be going on on Friday and then all of next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Uh, it does say Navajo Nation Council Budget Hearing. I don't see the times on there. Um, I did see it on the calendar, but I didn't write down the times, but I just want to remind all of you of that. And then the, the Law and Order Committee does meet the second, third and fourth Mondays of every month. Today was a special meeting. Uh, so just as a reminder, colleagues. So with that, we are now at the end of announcements. Committee members, are there any other announcements that need to be made at this time? Not hearing anything, we're going to go ahead and move to adjournments. Uh, Honorable Vince James has motioned to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Is there a, Kate, you see, that's it? Thank you.
Honorable Eugene So seconds the motion. Uh, so with that, Sherelle, can you assist us with the roll call vote please? And this is the motion to adjourn.
Okay, Honorable Vince James, how do you vote?
Delegate James votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote?
Vote, yeah.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Otto So, how do you vote?
Vote screen?
Yes.
Via text.
Honorable Otto So votes green via text. Honorable Ed Menyazi, how do you vote? Honorable Ed Menyazi, how do you vote? Honorable Madam Chair Charles Newton, you have three in favor, zero opposed, two not voting, which is including Honorable Madam Chair Charles Newton not voting and Honorable Ed Menyazi, absent Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Sherelle. So with that, committee members, we do have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, two not voting. We are hereby adjourned at 2:31 PM. Thank you.
I'm going to.
You guys be safe out there. Bye now.